Okay. All right, this is the Portsmouth Planning Board meeting for a regular meeting in June. Like to welcome my newest member, Norah Kane Daly, at the end, no name tag yet. So so far tonight, this will be the Wednesday, June 8, 2022, regular monthly meeting of the Planning Board. Mr. Lozinski, we have the agenda. Are there any continuances? No modifications. Okay. Next up is the approval of the minutes for the Planning Board meeting of May 11th. What is your pleasure?
I'd like to make a motion to accept the minutes as written.
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion made in second. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor say aye.
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 You got that, Barbara? Motion carries. Okay. Next up is applicant Icon Five Architects owner, Order St. Benedict in Portsmouth, AP 32 lot 2, 285 Cory's Lane, requests for advisory opinion to zoning board review for the development of a new 8,000 square foot student center.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the Planning Board, Gerard Galvin from Galvin Law. I'm here representing the Portsmouth Abbey. The Portsmouth Abbey has proposed a new student center in the middle of its campus. This property is located in an R60 zone, and so under our code here in Portsmouth, that private school use in the R60 requires a special use permit. The school has applied for that special use permit, and the application has been referred to both the Design Review Board and this board for an advisory opinion. And looking at this application through the lens of development plan review, so that's why we're here tonight. We were before the Design Review Board on Monday evening. They heard this matter and issued a positive recommendation stating that the project meets the goals of the Design Review Guidelines. I do have copies of the Design Review Board's advisory opinion. I'm not sure if you have them yet in your file.
We do.
You do? Okay. I wanted to make two quick, small notes on that opinion. One, and these are just, I think, clerical notes. It is titled as a concept plan review, and I just wanted to correct that for the record that it's an advisory opinion as required through the special use permit process. And secondly, that letter indicates it was heard as part of the master plan application process, which it wasn't. I think we're on sort of an expedited schedule here, and that was probably just a clerical error. That was an advisory opinion through the special use permit process, not a master plan process. So I just wanted to note that for the record. Tonight, we have several members of the project team here physically and also via Zoom to explain different components of the project. First, we have John Pereira, who is the seller of the Abbey. He's the authorized representative of the Abbey to explain why this new student center is needed. We have Joe Tatonie of Icon Five Architects via Zoom, and he'll be giving you a brief walkthrough of the new structure that's being proposed. We have Brian King of Crossman Engineers, who's a civil engineer, as well as Tom Principi via Zoom, also a civil engineer, to answer any questions you might have from an engineering perspective and touch on a few stormwater drainage, DEM points. We have James Herro, the project landscape engineer, available if you have any questions on that front. And Jim Hool is present, and he can speak briefly to consistency with the comprehensive plan and the zoning code. So I know you have another very important matter on the agenda tonight. We want to be respectful of your time. We did submit a large amount of materials. We appreciate the time you put into reviewing those. So if you don't have any further questions or any questions for me at this time, I'd call John Pereira up to give a brief description of the project and why the Abbey needs this addition to its campus.
Please proceed.
Okay.
Hi, thank you all. John Pereira from Portsmouth Abbey. This is my 36 year at the Abbey, and I'm responsible for all the operations, also represent the monastery, the Order St. Benedict, Portsmouth, Rhode Island. We have been looking at renovating and actually doing a new student center for quite some time now. We were very lucky in the generosity of our alum that they saw this as a major component to the school, the student life of the campus. We currently use a building that has been sort of adapted from a, it was actually before that, it was an art building, and before that, it was actually the original classroom building of the school. So that building is about, you know, give or take about 4,000 square feet total with about 2,500 to 3,000 square feet used for the students themselves. Obviously, with a boarding school, coed, 350 students, we are really exceeded that capacity. I mean, it really does not function well as a student center. This new project is so exciting for the institution and will certainly significantly increase the and improve the residential life and the general life of the school itself. It is in the center of the campus. We spent a lot of time on the location of the building, which allows access from all areas of the campus to the center. It's in a former location of St. Bead's House, which was taken down in, I believe, 2015. And it's basically a little bit larger, but the same basic square footage of that building. And we're very excited for this project. And again, I thank you all for reviewing it. I know it's a lot of work to review these things, but if there's any questions you have of me whatsoever, I'm happy to answer them.
Just for the record, John, could you state your address for the secretary?
285 Cory's Lane, Portsmouth, Rhode Island.
Thank you. Does any member of the board have a question for Mr. Pereira? Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, what I'd like to do next, Leah, if you could invite Joe Tatonie into the proceeding via Zoom, and I know he may be able to share his screen and walk the board through the project.
Okay, I'm bringing it up now. Tell me, Gerard, when you see it.
I think we have it.
All right, super. All right, and you all can hear me?
Yes.
It's good. All right, super. Well, thank you, everybody, very much. I'm Joe Tatonie, design principal at Icon Five Architects, and we're delighted to give you a brief explanation of this project and our thought process for the new student center at Portsmouth Abbey School. The new student center is a single-story, 8,000-square-foot structure, which is located in the center of campus, as John had mentioned, on the site of a former residence hall. As you all probably are aware, the campus is located between State Road 114 and Narragansett Bay. The campus entrance and the core campus buildings are located off of Cory's Lane, which is about a half a mile from the intersection of Cory's Lane and Route 114. The campus itself is organized around two outdoor spaces, the Holy Lawn to the west and Ravens Quad. I'm sorry, Holy Lawn to the east and Ravens Quad to the west. And the student center site right here is in the middle of campus at the head of Ravens Quad, where it will be able to overlook the water of the bay as per the campus master plan. Now, much of the campus character is singular in its expression, primarily built in the early 1960s by Pietro Beluschi, who was a well-known international architect at the time. The buildings around the Holy Lawn give a very distinct expression to the school. The campus character is established by, one, a consistency of materials, the aquatic regional fieldstone for building bases and site walls, board and batten wood siding for all vertical wall surfaces, and copper for the roofs and trim. The characters also conveyed by the iconic roof forms of some of the key buildings and long, broad, exaggerated eaves that overhang the sides of buildings and pathways. So the design of the new student center kind of reinterprets and builds on this campus distinguished expression, both being a part of it as well as distinct in its own character. This is an aerial view above the bay looking east, illustrating the site location between the Holy Lawn to the east and Ravens Quad to the west. Looking westward, you can see how the views of the bay will feature prominently in the design of the floor plan arrangement of the program spaces in the student center. The site is generally flat and opens with, and is completely open, and has about a three-foot grade change between the east and west. The pathways around the site on the east and west and north and south sides of the site are major pedestrian pathways that connect the Holy Lawn and the academic core of the campus with Ravens Quad and the residential core of the campus. Now, given the site and that context, the student center is envisioned as an enclosed porch that overlooks the bay and allows for visual and physical access to this very unique campus feature. The student center is oriented westward toward the water. So all major program spaces are along a north-south promenade that looks toward the water. The building is 112 feet long and 72 feet wide. And an overhead pergola wraps around and covers a west-facing outdoor terrace. That pergola diffuses the harsh west sunlight as it comes into the building and onto the terrace. Off of that terrace are gently stepping granite and landscaped amphitheater seats that then look out onto the quad and to the bay beyond. Additionally, the site is surrounded by landscape with new trees and ground cover, and all pathways that lead into the entrances to the building are handicap and universally accessible. This is a existing view of the site with the bay your back, so you're looking eastward. This is a proposed view looking eastward from Ravens Quad, and you can see how the student center now frames the quad at the head of that outdoor space. There is a copper brise soleil or sunscreen with a pergola that diffuses the sunlight coming into a two-story student commons in the building. The overall height of the building is 25 feet, which is lower than all the buildings that surround it. The two-story interior student commons is enclosed with wood windows that look out onto that landscaped amphitheater seating terrace and Ravens Quad. The upper portion of that student commons is wrapped in the brise soleil that's punched and folded copper panels that relate back to the iconic roofs on the main campus and also carefully diffuse the sunlight coming into that space. This is an existing view along the east end of Ravens Quad, along that pathway that leads to the north residence halls. This is a proposed view that illustrates how that covered terrace, the amphitheater seating, and then Ravens Quad all becomes kind of a spatial extension of that student common space that's inside and is enclosed. This is an existing view along the south pathway that connects Holy Lawn to Ravens Quad, looking toward the bay. This is a similar view along that south pathway, looking west toward the bay. And what it illustrates is one of the main student center entrance is on the east side of the building, right here in the middle, that the extended pergolas to the north and south begin to frame the views toward the bay as you move east and west along the campus pathways. And the main exterior materials of this building are copper for the roof, board and batten cedar siding for the vertical walls, and the aquatic regional fieldstone for the base. This is an existing view looking south toward the site. The site's right here. You're right off of the campus loop road. This is that same view looking south, and it illustrates the north facade of the student center with a six-foot-high stone wall that surrounds a small service yard off the north side of the building that conceals the mechanical equipment, the trash bins, service doors, and service vehicle parking for loading and delivery. Finally, let's briefly step inside so you get an understanding of what some of the program pieces of this facility are. So central to the student center is this space, which is the student commons. It's a double-height porch-like space that overlooks the terrace, the amphitheater seating, and the quad in the water, as I mentioned before. It is a multipurpose space, so it would be used for casual study, socialization, student work, student presentations, movie night, dances, et cetera. And supporting that space are four group study rooms that surround its south end, a two-person administrative office, a central lobby, and a small grill café area. This is a view coming in from the lobby into that common space, and you can see how you would have magnificent views of the bay beyond. And this is an overall view of the commons looking north toward the fireplace. So this is made out of Douglas fir timber-framed construction that provides the space with a kind of warm, woody character, similar to many of the other spaces on the main campus. And you can see also at the top that copper brise soleil, which is pre-patinated on both sides, that surrounds the top that allows for diffuse sunlight, sort of dapple the floor plane of the commons, making it a very inspirational and light-filled space for socialization and work. So that's briefly an overview of the project. Thank you so much for giving us this opportunity, and we'll be glad to answer any of your questions.
Any questions for the architect of the project, members of the board? Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. I would then like to call Brian King up briefly from Crossman Engineers. Brian, you can just stand here with me. Now, Brian, you're a professional engineer licensed in Rhode Island, correct?
Professional engineer.
And you've been accepted as an expert in engineering before, planning boards and zoning boards across the state previously.
Counselor, do you want us to acknowledge him as an expert in the field of engineering?
If you would.
Okay.
I'll go ahead and make a motion.
Have a motion made.
To acknowledge him as an expert, as a professional engineer. If that's what you're.
I would ask that he be so recognized. However, I'd like to make a quick clarification. Can you just state again where you are licensed?
Sure, I'm a licensed engineer in Connecticut, in Massachusetts.
Okay.
And a soil evaluator here in Rhode Island.
Soil evaluator, but you work for Crossman Engineering under a.
I do, and I'm here tonight representing the plan certified by Steve Cabra.
Which is, he's in responsible charge of the firm, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, all right. So do we still want to go through with our motion, even though he's not Rhode Island registered, but he is an expert in the field?
I would ask that, do you do that? And I do have another professional engineer who's licensed in Rhode Island testify.
Okay. So I think we had a motion.
So I'll adjust the motion to just make the motion that he's an expert in the field, expert testimony in the field.
Second, okay, we've got a motion made in second. All in favor say aye. Aye, okay, motion carries. Thank you.
So Brian, you've done a good deal of the civil engineering, and your firm has associated with the newly proposed structure, correct?
That's correct.
So can you just briefly walk the planning board through the site plan where the structure is going to go and touch on some of the engineering features, how you're addressing with any runoff created from the structure?
Sure. Crossman Engineering, as the civil engineers, our primary task was for the utility connections and to assist with grading. The nice thing about it is this proposed student center is at the location of where the St. Bead's building was, and it's centrally located on campus, so there's utilities all around, connections are available. We connect to, there's a six-inch water line that we connect with a two-inch service. There's an eight-inch sewer line that goes to one of the larger septic systems. We're connecting that with a six-inch sewer line. The drainage storm lines in the area are 18-inch and 24-inch. We are collecting the roof runoff and with a structure in a pipe that connects to that 18-inch, it's a 10-inch pipe. Gas is being provided by an underground propane tank, and electric and communications is available. So in the drainage comparison, we did take credit for the St. Bead's building, which has been there within the last 10 years. So comparing the proposed rooftop with the St. Bead's building, there is a slight increase in rooftop area impervious area. It's roughly 5,200 square feet. So what we did is we went through the DEM regulations to make sure that if there was any permits that were needed, or CRMC as well, if there's any permits that were needed, we would certainly apply for. But this, this small increase is not significant enough to warrant a permit. To further explain, the ripdies permit is typically for land disturbance over one acre in size. Where less than one acre, we're about 0.6 acres of soil disturbance, so a ripdies permit is not triggered. Any stormwater or water quality permits are not required because the impervious area for the rooftop is less than 10,000 square feet. Peak flow is waived by DEM because the stormwater for this area, the entire campus, drains directly to the Narragansett Bay, so that's a fifth order water body. It does not require any peak flow mitigation. And as far as wetlands, you know, for CRMC or DEM, we're beyond the jurisdictional area. So this, it's not significant enough to warrant any of those, trigger any of those permits. So what we're doing is we're connecting directly into the existing catch basin and pipe system, which ultimately discharges to the Narragansett Bay. And just to add, in a little beyond utilities, our plans do also provide, you know, details for these utility connections. We do provide a soil erosion and sediment control plan for the contractor to follow, and it identifies the construction area, you know, temporary fencing as needed, any lay-down area, and then restoration of the lay-down area after construction.
Okay, thank you. And just to follow up, in your opinion, from your engineering background and perspective, there are no significant environmental impacts from this proposal, correct?
Oh, that is correct.
Okay, and in your opinion, this proposal will not create a nuisance or a hazard in the neighborhood or general vicinity, correct?
I agree, we're not.
Okay. That's all I wanted to get on to Mr. King. If there's any questions from the board for him, I do have another engineer addressing a few other issues.
So let's see if any board members have questions for Goodyear. I have one. You mentioned virtually no permitting. Is there any trigger to the CRMC permit at all?
No, we're outside of that jurisdictional area.
And is your firm, there is, got responsible charge over the septic connection and the review of whatever's going to be generated?
Yeah, that'll actually be discussed next.
Okay.
Our task was to connect to the piping that leads to the big septic system, and then we have some other information.
It was a perfect segue, Mr. Chair. If we could, Leah, invite Tom Principi into the discussion. And I believe Tom has testified many times here before, and he has a great deal of history and institutional knowledge with the layout at the Abbey, and he'll speak to those central concerns. Yes, I, he should be, is he not listed as a participant? Well, we might, perhaps what I'll do is, somebody give him a quick call. Yeah, well, Brian could speak to that, but my preference was to have Tom speak to it so we can reach out to him quickly. I spoke to him just an hour ago when he was planning on signing in. But we also have, why don't we circle back to that question? And what I'll do is invite Mr. Hool to come up. All right, now, Mr. Hool, you're a.
Can we just get his name and address for the record, too, please?
James Hool, H O U L E, 198 Union Street, Portsmouth.
Now, Jim, you're a licensed appraiser, correct?
That is correct.
All right, and you've been recognized as a land use expert by the Planning Board and Zoning Board here in Portsmouth many times in the past, correct?
That is true.
I asked that Mr. Hool be recognized as an expert in land use, real estate.
Have a motion in that regard?
I'll make a motion then that Mr. Hool be recognized as a.
All right, we have a motion made in second. All in favor say aye. Jim votes aye. Motion carries.
Thank you very much. So Jim, we've asked you to review this proposal to opine on whether it is consistent with the comprehensive plan and zoning code in Portsmouth. And could you describe your investigation into that question and your resulting opinions?
Sure. I looked at it, and I'm not sure whether or not you're actually dealing with the special use criteria that would apply to the construction of this building. But I looked at it in terms of the special use permit standards, whether it would result in a significant diminution. It certainly will not. Whether it would be compatible with neighboring land uses, it certainly would be that. It's right in the center of the campus. I think the description was excellent, that it will not create a nuisance in the neighborhood. That is certainly true. Adequate protection afforded to the surrounding property. That is, you know, safe vehicular access and parking, control of noise, smoke, odors, lighting, solar lights are accounted for. All of that is certainly in conformance with the proposal. All the standards are in conformance. It'll be compatible with a comprehensive community plan. I think this is really, you know, obvious, the, you know, Portsmouth Abbey is a cultural mainstay of the town, and I think it's very important that we look at it in terms of the fact that it's a major employer, that it is something that lends, again, on a cultural basis, it gives a strong amenity to the town just by its presence. We're looking at it in terms of its improving its campus and its functionality. I think it's, I think that everything that we look at in terms of the comprehensive community plan is really well-taken, well-accounted for. The, you know, we look at it again in terms of health, safety. You know, everything about this proposal really is very much in conformance with all the standards of the the special use and in conformance with the comp land use plan.
Okay, thank you. Again, we just wanted to get Jim's brief overall viewpoint on that. If there's any questions you have about the comp.
Any questions for Mr. Hool, for any members of the board?
Just one, I'm just hearing a lot of conformance, consistent with comprehensive community plan. So there's no variances or exceptions that you're worried about.
There is a special use permit. That's why I addressed those standards.
We're here before you because we had to apply for a special use permit because of this being an educational, private school in a residential zone. That triggered this special use permit process. A number of the criteria that Mr. Hool just went through is what the zoning board will be reviewing in great detail next Thursday. But there's a little bit of overlap in some of the standards, and we just wanted to address certainly consistency with the comp plan here with you, the planning board, as you're coming to an advisory opinion to forward to the zoning board.
I think that's good. Thank you.
Any sign of, okay. There, yes. Thank you. Thank you. The other thing we could do is I I can walk Brian, who again has the engineering background. Through through the line of questioning that I was going to ask Tom. He's familiar with these issues. You know, they've been collaborating on this project. So he can answer some of these other questions related to the septic as well if we can't get Tom in here.
Let's give him a minute. We'll see if we can. Get Mr. Principi signed in.
It's always good to bring two engineers.
Hello? Can you hear me? How you guys doing?
Just through audio, Leah. Tom, I, Tom, can you hear me? This is Gerard Galvin. Okay, great. Could you just briefly introduce yourself to the members of the planning board?
Yes, absolutely. Good evening, members of the board, Mr. Chair, Tom Pritzby, Principi Engineering Company, registered professional engineer.
And Tom, you've been recognized as an expert in engineering by the Portsmouth Planning Board and Zoning Board many times before, correct?
Yeah, that's correct.
Mr. Chair, could we have Tom recognized as an expert in engineering?
We can. Let's just make sure, and I I know the answer already, but he's a registered professional engineer in the state of Rhode Island.
Correct. In the state of Rhode Island, correct, Tom?
Yes, correct.
Can we get a motion?
I'll I'll make a motion to recognize Mr. Principi as a professional engineer in the state of Rhode Island.
Motion made in second. All in favor say aye. Aye. Motion carries.
Thank you very much. Now, Tom, you have, you know, particular knowledge of the broader Abbey campus. And specifically as it relates to the septic design on the campus, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
And could you just speak to how this structure will be incorporated into the broader septic system on campus?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. Yeah. So we've been in contact with the Department of Environmental Management who regulates these septic systems and. The Portsmouth Abbey has a few different types of septic systems on the campus. It's not just one. Central system. There's multiple systems throughout. And to back up a little bit on the history behind it is this this site that we're proposing the new student center for. There was already a structure there. There's actually sewer infrastructure. That was in place and that particular building was already tied into their leaching field. So essentially with our new project. We're going to tie into the same location and the same line that the previous building was tied into as well. And with our multiple meetings with the D E M, we've reviewed the project with them. And also the previous permits that have been issued for the Abbey and the multiple systems on the property. And the biggest thing that the precedence that's been set with the D E M and they've confirmed with us is. You know, we're not adding additional flow to the overall system. This student center is, you know, is a private student center. For the. The personnel and the kids at the school itself. It's not open to the public. So when we talk about the flow and the gallons per day and tying into the existing system. That we have currently in place. You know, that that's the type of thought process that the D E M looks at as well. We still have to file that permit. We're just waiting on the final plans to get that squared away and up to the state, but we have been in close communication with the D E M. And they don't see any issues with the proposal.
Okay, thank you. And. Based on your participation in and review of this project, in your opinion, are there any negative environmental impacts from this proposal?
No.
Does it adequately protect the safety, health and welfare of the community?
Yes.
Okay. And there is permanent access to the public street, that street being Corey's Lane, correct?
Yes, correct.
And to that end, we've we've received an approval from the fire marshal relating to emergency access. That approval coming with some conditions, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. I'm not sure if that was forwarded to the planning board. I do I do have copies of that.
Could we have those? We don't. We do not have that.
Okay. So as with any. Positive advisory finding or approval from the zoning board, you know, we understand that that would be conditional on satisfying. The conditions laid out with the fire marshal in in that approval letter. Tom, is there anything else that you think is important from an engineering perspective to convey to the the planning board about the project?
Again, not not as far as, you know, our involvement is specifically with the D E M and the septic system. Design of this overall project. I know we have Brian King from Crossman who's doing more of the, you know, drainage and site grading. Layout perspective. So in the perspective of D E M, no, I don't think there's any other information I can add unless any members of the board have any questions for me.
Anybody have any questions for Mr. Principi? I I just have one counselor. As far as the septic so-called permitting. That's just going to be a an extension of the permit you already have, Tom, or what what will actually be issued for the record?
Yeah, no, that's a great question, Mr. Chair. So we already have an active permit with the D E M currently. So what we're going to do is have to just modify that permit. So there will have to be a an application that is submitted to the state. And formally approved and reviewed and accepted. So we're still working on the same permit.
Great. That's all I had.
Sure.
Okay, very much. So. We do have other members who are available to testify of the development team who are available to testify. I don't know how critical. You you would find them to your analysis. We have our landscape architect here, a project manager. I think I think the most important information for us to get to you tonight was really focused on the engineering and understanding the. The project as a whole. We can call those other members up, but we want to be respectful of of your time. You put a lot of work into reviewing. All of these materials. So we'll leave it to you if you have any additional questions. Otherwise, we would respectfully request a positive advisory opinion. Be submitted to the zoning board prior to our meeting there next week.
So let's, we had a couple items of interest here. Number one is we've got the design review. Comments. We should probably accept that as exhibit one formally.
So I I can make that motion then.
That'd be great.
To enter the designer review board comments as exhibit.
One, we'll call it.
So we'll do, we'll do one more time. Do we have a second to Mr. Tibbetts' motion? Okay, we have motion made and seconded to accept the design review board as exhibit one. All favor say aye. Chair votes aye, okay, exhibit one.
And then I would say I'd make a motion to enter the Portsmouth Fire Department letter of five twenty three as exhibit two.
Second to that? All right, motion made and seconded to accept the fire department review dated five twenty three, twenty two. All in favor say aye? All right, motion carries. In in regard to the design review, perhaps we could just hear briefly what the landscape piece is going to be.
Sure.
Mr. Gavin.
Absolutely. If we could, Leah, invite James Herro. James, can you hear me?
I can hear you. Can you hear me?
I can. So James, you know, you did a wonderful job really laying out for design review board on Monday night, the landscaping plan. And if if you could give a brief summary or explanation about that plan to the planning board, that would be great.
Sure, just like Mr. Beluski's simple yet geometrically organized. Campus plan. The planting is is similar. We have a very simple planting plan. The holy lawn actually has some framing using upright English oaks. We're using upright pin oaks, a hardier species. Which is also on the Portsmouth approved planting list. At the north and south ends of the buildings and then complementing that with sugar maple and yellow wood. Also two trees that are on the. Approved planting list. The ground plane, we're keeping it very simple as well. Below the pergola, we're keeping it with some ground cover on the terrace itself. Just for some safety purposes, we're adding some spirea, some juniper, some dogwood shrubs. And at the north side of the building, using spirea cathera and sumac. Hardy species which are in, you know, keeping in the spirit of institutional type of plantings. That it will take abuse yet thrive in the Narragansett Bay area. I am a landscape architect. Not only educated but trained in Rhode Island. I am based in Massachusetts and. Have done work on the campus before, most recently the Science Center.
And and James, could, I I forget if you spoke to to the lighting plan on Monday night or if Joe to Tony did, but.
I think we both did.
Yeah.
Basically, the the area lighting around the around the building is remaining as it is. There's there's the campus standard pole lights. We're leaving where they are. One of them might be slightly adjusted due to layout of pathways. There is an added bollard at the east side and main entry into the building, really just for for safety code. Keep that one foot candle requirement that needs to get egress from the building. And Joe spoke of the. Basically, the. Lighting for the pergola screen, which is focused down on the terrace itself, not up into the atmosphere. Keeping it in keeping with the dark skies initiatives that are favored today. I want to speak for you, Joe, but if you have anything else to add to that, I think that probably covers it. Other than the. West facing stair coming from the terrace down to the Raven Quad that that has an illuminated handrail. Just to put that one foot candle on the stair as well.
And I think they're able to answer any more detailed questions on lighting or landscaping that that you may have.
Perfect. Any any questions for any members of the board? Okay.
Okay, well, with that, you know, we'll we'll conclude and thank you again for your time and and ask for. A positive recommendation.
Will do.
Thank you very much.
All right, so at this point, we'll open it up to any members of the public. I'd like to start with the anyone online that has a comment for this petition. Okay, thank you. Any members of the public that are present at the meeting that would like to address this petition? Okay. I guess we'll officially close the. The public comment. What's the pleasure of the board?
I would like to make a favorable favorable opinion for the design review or zoning, I'm sorry, right?
For the zoning.
For the zoning board. I think they did a great presentation. It looks like a great building. I can't see anything that. Wouldn't be spot on.
Um, maybe, and I think that's a great motion. Could we also add that?
Oh, the fire department.
We want to add the the fire department's letter being incorporated. So incorporate exhibits one and two, Mr. King's testimony that it's compatible with the comp plan. Mr. Principi's testimony that it is contingent upon a Rhode Island D E M permit.
Permit, right.
And that, I believe, the first engineer from Crossman, they are going to produce a soil erosion and sediment control plan prior to construction. Does that sound good?
That sounds good. Just don't ask me to repeat it.
Do you have that, Barbara? Okay. Do we have a second to that motion? That was Kate. Okay, get a motion made and seconded for a favorable recommendation to the zoning board for the petition. Call for a vote. All favor say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, next on the agenda. Is the applicant Church Community Housing Corporation, owner town of Portsmouth, A P. A P twenty three lot two, one ten Bristol Ferry Road. Request for comprehensive master plan approval for a low or moderate housing development.
Getting like a couple of my guys up here anyway.
Mr. Chappelle.
Hello, Court Chappelle, office is at one seventy one Chase Lane, Portsmouth, Rhode Island here on behalf of Church Community Property. As you know, you've seen this project before. You started a plea application conference. It's map twenty three lot two. Those of you that have been lifetime Portsmouth guys, call it Ann Hutchinson School. Those of you a little newer to town, call it the senior center. It's two hundred and thirty thousand, two hundred eighty one square feet or approximately five plus acres. It's zoned R twenty. And we are here. How how do we get here, I guess is a good question. Normally, it's an R twenty in the multi incentive zone, and this is apartment housing that would come under article seven. Of the Portsmouth zoning ordinance. But whenever you are dealing with low to moderate income. We go to article nineteen of the zoning ordinance, which gives the planning board exclusive jurisdiction for a. Comprehensive permit. To approve all low to moderate income housing projects. In order to be a low to moderate income housing project, at least twenty five percent of the units proposed. Need to be low to moderate income. Remember why we're here and why every town has a low to moderate income ordinance? It's because your governor and your state has mandated that all towns do their best to get to ten percent affordable housing. I think you're going to hear from one of our experts tonight, Jim Bull, that Portsmouth had a relatively dismal two point eight. And because of that, there's a fast track basically for comprehensive permit saying that the standard. Is that you must find that twenty five percent of the units are low to moderate, and you must find that our our town is in need of that. And then there's a couple of simple standards. One, that we won't have any environmental impacts that are dangerous to the community. And one kind of neighboring standard for public health and safety, saying that things like drainage, traffic and noise. Won't affect the neighbors anymore than outweighs the need for low to moderate income housing. So that's how we get here. The standards and procedure is exactly like your article eight. P U Ds, which is probably Newport Beach Club and those things. The planning board looks at these as a planned urban development. Or as a development project. They look at them at master plan, preliminary plan and final plan. Of course, preliminary and final can be, I don't want to jump the gun, but in certain instances, you can you can put those together. But at the master plan, we put together the full application that you see before you in all your packages. And then. You pass on that. You don't have necessarily the R I D O T permits at this point. You don't have the Rhode Island D E M permits at this point. You have generally the building, what variants and modifications. From our ordinances would be needed. You have generally the building, what variants and modifications from our ordinances would be needed. And then we come back at preliminary with kind of the fine tuning, the same way you did in the solar ordinance things, for instance. So with that, we have a pretty comprehensive team here tonight. We've already met Christian Beldon, who is the executive director for the Church Community Housing Corporation. Our architect is Union Studio Architecture, Mr. Paul Adaman, Senior Associate. We have Mike Darbo from Darbo Land Surveying to talk about the site plan and the layout. And Mr. Bull is here as our real estate expert. I also remind you that this is the only petition we're ever going to see that has a little bit of a pre-history to it. You're never going to have one where a town referendum was needed because it's town property. Remember, our town charter says if the town owns land, they cannot sell that land unless there is a public referendum and vote to sell that. Well, it also says if you're going to lease land for ninety-nine years, it's akin to a sale and you'll also need that referendum. So those of you that recall in prior to November and prior to being on the ballot, all the king's horses and all the king's men's battled whether or not church community who proposed to the town and got what's called an M M O memorandum of understanding to lease the land and to pitch the L M I senior adult living complex, they had to get the referendum approved. Because it's currently the state or the site of the Portsmouth Senior Center, that obviously raised a lot of eyebrows of whether or not senior housing was replacing the senior center. That would have been one fairly travesty for the town to lose something that's an important part of our town and it would have made the town build it someplace else. Instead, a collaborative effort was put together. There were meetings between all of the senior center executive staffs, the town, the planning department. And they came up with a comprehensive plan to basically share the property. So the property will have not only fifty-four units of low to moderate income, it will also house the new senior center. The new senior center, we're going to show you in the plans, is about eighty-nine hundred square feet of modern high-tech, good new senior center. If you want to compare that, the Ann Hutchinson School currently, the senior center is only allowed to use what's called the addition, about forty-five hundred square feet. So it's not twice the size of the entire building they once maybe had, but it's twice the size of what's allowed by condemnation of the old building. And I think it was well planned out with multi-fitness centers, with kitchens for those things, with thrift shops, with office space, with fitness centers, with all the things that are currently at the senior center. And amenities you'd also find at senior housing. It did make a very logical share because senior housing would often have amenities for their many guests. It did go to town referendum, as you know, it was approved. And before going to town, for all purposes, this exact plan had to be pitched before the town council to approve the referendum that would go to town. So the same building, the same layout. It's still subject to your approval for those standards for an L M I, but it's been looked at by the town. It's not taller than it was. It's not bigger than it was. It doesn't have more units than it had. It's just, in fact, we have to pitch it substantially the same or the referendum says we need to come back. So if we tried to go ten percent bigger or fifteen percent bigger, the referendum and the townspeople voted this one, not something that was bigger or worse. There's always going to be some neighbors that are affected, but again, it's generally the problem, the, the L M I pitch is that it's not the same as a specially used permit where you can say, how does it affect the land values in my neighborhood or the plant? It says, the way you'll shoot it down is to say Portsmouth has met their ten percent or that environmentally it's a health hazard or that public health and safety are so affected that it outweighs the need for L M I. So I don't want to say your hands are a little tied, but your hands are a little tied. And that's kind of what we pitched before, but I know at a public meeting, there may be other people, so I wanted them to, to understand the standard. So with that, I'll start with Mr. Christian Beldon. Again, the director, kind of the same speech he gave you last time on how it came to be and what is proposed here. I'll then move to my architect to give you the specifics of the buildings themselves. And that includes the number of units, the height and the distances. The surveyor, Mark Darbo, can tell you the distance from property lines, the layout of parking lots. And I'm specifically listened when you talked to us at the pre-application hearing. I'll spend time presenting myself, the parking that everyone had a concern with and, and the flow. We'll point out things on, on what we did based on the last discussions about moving dumpsters and putting them behind screens. Obviously, the things that are more at the preliminary are the light specifications that are at the preliminary stage and design review. But I know neighbors have raised that. They're all the same modern things we do in every other petition that we all hear. They're dark sky compliant, all designed not to shine on neighbors and not the lights of our forefathers. Where National Grid put twenty thousand lumens at thirty feet in our backyards for parking. So with that introduction, Mr. Beldon?
Thank you. Good evening. I won't belabor what court has already said. I will just reiterate that what's before you is a plan that does what we said we were going to do when we campaigned for the referendum. We're proposing to save the senior center by building a new senior center, the design of which was created in collaboration with the senior center advisory group appointed by the town council and including the senior center director, the senior center board president, who's here with us tonight, senior center members, town council president, town council vice president, public works director, town planner. And that new senior center plan is identical. What you have before you is identical to the plan that we developed then, which is the plan that we presented to the town prior to the referendum. We're proposing fifty-four units of senior affordable housing, the same number we presented prior to the referendum. We're proposing to save the historic Ann Hutchinson four-room schoolhouse by converting it to up to six market rate condominiums. And we're proposing to save the, the ball field. Those are the, the items that we campaigned on and that is in fact the proposal that you have before us. If you approve this proposal, the addition of fifty-four senior affordable housing units will increase the town's percentage of affordable housing by twenty-six percent. Currently have two-hundred-and-four units, fifty-four more is a twenty-six percent increase. Of the two-hundred-and-four units of affordable housing that you currently have, one-hundred-and-sixty-seven are senior or elderly housing. Therefore, this is a thirty-two percent increase in the amount of senior affordable housing. The total increase will, you know, it's not going to get you to your ten percent, but it will improve it from two-point-seven-five to three and a half percent. I would also like to say that it's been a policy of Church Community Housing for, oh, much longer than I've been with the company to pay our property taxes. We believe that it is consistent with being a good neighbor, with contributing to the communities in which we operate. And we've estimated a, a total estimated property tax for both the senior housing and the six market rate condos of a hundred-and-forty-three thousand dollars per year in property taxes. That's an estimated seventy-eight thousand dollars from the senior housing development, an estimated sixty-five thousand dollars from the condo property taxes. That's really all I have to add at this point, so.
Just a couple of things. One thing is you usually are here with an L M I when I'm a developer that has, can I give you a subdivision that I could put sixteen lots on my land, but I asked to bump it to twenty and get an incentive of a bunch of extras. And I only have to have twenty-five percent of them being L M Is. So what I've done is seventy-five percent have added to the house, which automatically requires seven and a half more L M Is to get to ten percent. But I'm actually in twenty-five, so I'm just bumping things a little. This is ninety percent L M I, all fifty-four units. The only reason there's any non-L M I units is the Ann Hutchinson School is, has a storage value and people wanted to save it. It can't really be saved as an L M I if it needs stairs and.
It's, it's fundamentally, it's a masonry structure. And the, the cost of converting that to housing is just too great to be able to get funding approval to do it from the funders.
So the L M I, the non-L M I pitch is not typically before you a developer saying, hey, I can make a couple bucks. It's, hey, I'm going to try to satisfy the town to try to keep that historic building for you. And by pitching those units, we can break even on building them and satisfy really our representations when we were pitching the referendum to say, I'm going to save your senior center. And remember, the senior center is going to stay in full occupation and full use during construction. So we're not taking that down and taking it apart. This is designed that we build this building, move the senior center and then vacate. So our seniors won't have a day where they don't have a, a place to go in the meantime. And I think that's important too. And ultimately, when, when we seek final approval, hopefully, that would be one of the conditions that are constructive. Because we have to give you a construction plan and a, and a, and a project layout and a time commitment on, on the order of things done. The order of things done will be that, as long as that senior center building, the town can keep that open, we're not doing anything to stop that.
No, it's very important to us that the senior center be allowed to remain open while we build the new senior center and senior housing so that there is no lapse in their operations.
Right. But before you leave, any questions for Mr. Beldon? Can you use your mic? Can you use the mic?
The wing that's coming off, the, the newer wing of the building, that's going to stay in place during all the construction.
Yeah, we've checked with contractors that there's enough room. It's not, it's, and on the plan, it doesn't look like there's a lot of room, but there we've checked. There's enough room for them to build the new building, new senior center and allow the existing senior center to stay open and not impede it.
Thanks. Anything else? Good, okay, thank you.
I just had a question about the ball field. Sorry. So I know that that's not a guarantee, right? So I guess just my question, where does that leave the town as far as a lost ball field? Because I, I believe it is used and it's one of the few fields where they have power. And what, and when will they, when will they lose use of it?
Yeah, so we've provided the plans that you have before you to the town and they are currently evaluating the feasibility of relocating the ball field as shown on the plans. Ultimately, it's a decision of the town. We, we have done our part to prove that it's physically possible. But the relocation of the ball field was always going to be a, a town undertaking. Because when we originally started talking to the town about this project, they had said, oh, we don't need the ball field there. We're going to build a new one elsewhere. And so then I said, well, actually, we'd like to have, you know, children, youth activity happening in conjunction with this senior development in the senior center. And they said, oh, if you have room, that would be great. That would probably be actually more cost effective than building a new ball field elsewhere. So we've done the, the design that shows that it's possible and where it would go and what's involved. And the town is currently looking at doing that analysis to decide if it wants to relocate it and keep it here or build a new one elsewhere.
So, and which, which part of the town said that they were going to build a new field?
I've been speaking with the town manager, but I believe that they had an internal discussion recently in town about this.
Okay.
And I also understand that if they don't put it there and they relocate it someplace else, this same space would still be dedicated to town for recreational use. So there's a possibility of a tennis court, playground or something else that could be a town amenity because they have the use of this space for any compatible recreational area. So you may get even more than you have now or you may get the ball field.
So just to be clear on the question, you only had to provide the space, the town would be ultimately responsible for the construction of the ball field, is that correct?
That, that's correct. We would in fact lease back that part of the property to the town. And, and thank you for pointing that out because that's absolutely accurate. What's been communicated to me is that ball field for some other recreational use, whatever it is, the town is going to keep that area that would have been for the ball field and, and use it.
Okay.
I do want to point out one more thing. The contingency was if the town wanted to do it because of its cost, but it was also whether our engineering would allow it and whether or not we could meet the drainage requirements of our ordinance and the parking requirements of our ordinance. Because I promise you this, if you get rid of that ball field, I got all the parking in the world. And one thing we're going to talk about in a bit is that technical view of the parking would be a hundred-and-twenty-four spots. And we pitch a hundred-and-seventeen, which of course is seven less. That's not, I say technical because our ordinance allows for shared parking. And I think when you look at a recreational use next to a senior center, next to senior housing, shared parking makes a lot of sense. And I don't think you would hold us to the maximum, which is A plus B plus C if looked at individually in the first place. But that was one of the criteria that we could meet engineering. It just does seem that preliminarily, we have been able to meet all of that engineering with very low variances regarding parking. There'll be no drainage requirements that are varied. There'll be no septic requirements that are varied.
I think Ms. Daley.
I just want to check, when you said lease the land back to the town at a cost.
No, not at a cost. No cost.
No cost.
No cost.
Got it. Any other questions, Mr. Beldon?
I would think that Little League, if they're the ones using the field instead of the town taxpayers, would probably pony up some of the money for the baseball fields.
Traditionally in town, Little Leagues and Pop Warner and those things contribute to the maintenance of the town and do a lot of the work themselves.
Right.
Ultimately, Kevin and Gary may tell you more, but ultimately there is budget items to maintain the ball, all, all of ball fields, whether it's in the land or, and I still call it Penn Field and it's not Penn Field. And Turnpike Avenue Playground and really small ball field behind that.
Yep, all right, thanks.
I, I made copies of the information about the affordable housing numbers and the estimated taxes. Would you like those?
Sure, if you'd like to submit that, that's fine.
We'll just move that exhibit one.
Absolutely.
Chairman, any more questions of Mr. Beldon?
I think we're good.
Thank you.
Aye.
With that, I would introduce Paul Adamant, the Senior Association Union Studio Architecture, as a certified Rhode Island architect that has to be qualified as an expert. I know you have done that in the past.
Can we get a motion to accept this witness as an expert in the field of architecture?
We'll make that motion to accept him as an expert in the field of.
Okay, we have a motion made and seconded. All in favor say aye. Aye.
Thank you.
I don't think we have to, that's zoning counselor.
I get it. I get confused in all these places. Well, why don't you start with an introduction with a little, who you are and your firm and then we'll go through your presentation.
Okay, thank you.
Neil, would you please bring up the presentation?
Right. Thank you.
Okay. Good evening, members of the board. I'm Paul Adamant, Senior Associate with Union Studio Architecture and Community Design, based in Providence, Rhode Island. Sorry. Oh, thanks. Yeah, it's, it's a little odd for me to look, but I, I'm going to try to look at the top. Well, our firm was established in two thousand and one with the sole purpose to use our skills as architects and urban designers to make civic contributions to communities of all types. We are based in Providence. We have almost thirty employees in Providence and one in Philadelphia. And we're moving forward with a lot of projects that use a power of design and to enrich the lives and strengthen our communities, communities, which is our mission. And that takes a form of a lot of different types of projects from housing, both affordable housing to mixed, mixed income housing to private developer housing to. Uh, developer housing to, um. Public institutions like the Tiverton Library on the upper left-hand corner. Student housing for Middlebury College up in the middle and upper right. We do a lot of planning that sets that, the vision up for community, uh, to inspire and build what they envision. Uh, we also have private developers with the one on the right-hand side, lower right is the headquarters for Water Rower Corporation in Warren, Rhode Island. So in any work that we do, we look at the, understand the places of value and we try to bring value of place to every project. Including this one here in Portsmouth. Uh, I think everyone knows the site very well. It's right on Bristol Ferry Lane at the corner of Brownell. Uh, lane. It is currently a Portsmouth Senior Center formerly built as Anne Hutchinson School back in nineteen twenty-eight. Uh, it has a recreational ball field on the northwest corner as a sloping down, uh, the, the site. Uh, from the High Point along Bristol Ferry Lane. This here is an existing survey showing some of the topography and existing structures. Uh, that Mike Darvo or, uh, surveyor might talk about a little bit later. But I, I wanted to give you a little bit of a, sort of analysis of the site. On, as I mentioned, the Bristol Ferry Road on the east side is the high point of the site. It slopes down west, down Brownell Lane toward the bay. And the, the existing structure is then Hutchinson School, which is predominantly a two and a half story structure with a one-story. Addition that was added on the north side of the building, uh, toward the fifties. Uh, the, there's a couple, three memorial gardens that have been planted over the years that we intend to relocate and respect. Uh, to make the, the plan, uh, work. And then there's a heavy vegetative buffer along the north property line as well as the western property line, which is, you know, low in the site. On the south side, it's very open. You can see through this, uh, into the site very freely. And has a great southern exposure and wonderful western views and nice summer breezes. Sorry. It's a little delayed, but this here is a photo of the, uh, building when it was first opened in nineteen twenty-eight. And a, the, it was a four-room schoolhouse, iconic structure of New England elementary schools at the time. That Church Community Housing is wanting to restore the, for the six market rate apartments once the project is, uh, completed. These are photos of the building, uh, the front elevation on the upper left, the rear elevation on the upper right. And moving around the sides, you can see that there, on the north side, that is the one-story. Uh, addition that is in disrepair, leaking, masonry is failing. Uh, it really needs to be removed or rebuilt, but we are proposing to remove it. To make way for the new Portsmouth Senior Center. Uh, our proposed plan. Well, is right here. Uh, and I think this is, we've developed it a little bit further since we were before you. We've, uh, just canted the building a little bit to the, uh, southeast. Uh, southwest, sorry, because to make way for parking that is needed on the north side of the building. Uh, there's two entrance points to the, the, uh, the development. Uh, one on the north side is a curb cut, uh, that is ingress and egress to the north parking field, which is dedicated to the senior residents. The other curb cut is between the existing Anne Hutchinson School that will be preserved and the new building. It's double loaded and that would be, uh, designated and primarily for the senior center. And the entrance to the building, you'll see in the floor plans, is on the south side of the building, the primary entrance. Uh, both for the, um, senior center, which is on the west east side of the building. And then along the west bar halfway down, that is the entrance to the, uh, residence. Uh, that is a guest, could be used as primarily as a guest entrance because on the north side opposite. That is another entrance for the residents on the north elevation, uh, from the parking field there. Um, the middle parking field also continues, uh, through to the site and then turns south and exits. Uh, to Brown, Brownell, Brownell Lane. There's a parking field next to the proposed relocation of the ball field or recreation area. And that there, uh, would be primarily for the recreation activities of the site. There's one other parking field that's designated, uh, at the front of the Anne Hutchinson School. And that would be parking for the market rate condos. And that is what, there's one, uh, entry and exit there off Brownell Lane, which is. Pretty, pretty close to the existing curb cut that is there now.
Just to drop. When he's done with his presentation, I'll go into parking very specifically on the requirements of the ordinance and where we have them and what we're doing and what parents have required. And I'll have both the surveyor and Mr. Belden, who will. Help with the testimony. Where we got to why we have enough. Specifically drone shots of the ball field to tell you how many people are there on a Saturday when teams are playing overlap. And how many parking spots are actually being used at the other three senior housing LMI facilities? That Church Community Housing involved.
Thanks. The, the proposed site plan, this is the, um, surveyor's plan, so I'll have him talk a little bit about that. Uh, later, because he'll talk a little bit more about detail about grading, structures, septic and, um, the overall plan. But I wanted to also share with you, uh, this, uh, list of relief waivers that we're asked modifications we're asking for in our application. And I'll walk through them fairly. Precisely or concisely, the very first thing is the special use permit where senior affordable housing. Uh, market rate condos, a senior center within a residential multifamily incentive district is proposed.
Which is true, but instead of being a special use permit in front of the zoning board with what we call their A through J criteria. It is a comprehensive permit here with what we call the Article nineteen, the ten, I believe. And I have a, I'll have a copy of all of your proposed findings that you would need to have at final stage. If, if, uh, we get through master and those things. But there's specific findings like, like the A through J criteria you hear about at the zoning board. It's, again, it's, uh, more than twenty-five percent of the units are LMI. It's into the comprehensive plan. We haven't hit ten percent. Architectural is integrity for the non-market units is as good as the market units, so they're not, not pitching tents with a column LIs and. Our condos for the non-residential units, everything has to be integrated and done. And then engineering for environmental impacts, if there is environmental impacts, it can be, uh, you need a satisfaction of that. And public health and safety doesn't outweigh the need for LMI. So there can be traffic, but the traffic. Dangerous traffic situation would have to be, would have to outweigh the, the need for LMI. So we'll have all of that, but that's one. You also, when you get to Article nineteen, have very specific design criteria for multifamily houses. And looks like a lot of variance, but in fact, there's like thirty design criteria we don't need anywhere near. So we'll start with what we don't need. And anytime you have a project, we draw what's called the, uh, building envelope. We look at the setbacks set forth in our ordinance and in our twenty zone. And here particularly, there are thirty-foot front yards, twenty-five-foot side, thirty-foot rear. We require no building setback appearances. We've been able to put everything inside of what would be allowed by any developer. Of this land if it were a vacant piece. There's also lot coverage that can't exceed twenty percent of building. We are at.
Well, lot coverage for buildings and parking is what we have calculated.
But just, just for lot covered buildings, we're allowed twenty percent. So if you had two hundred and thirty thousand square feet, you could have forty-six thousand square feet of building. We're obviously much less than that. We're only at twelve percent. Again, no variance requested, no variance needed. They also look at the lot and say, well, when you add your parking and those things. Are you going to have impervious areas of parking combined by buildings that exceed forty percent? We do not. We're at thirty-nine percent. That's one of the reasons we, we. And, and we could get a slight variance over forty by adding more pavement and adding more parking we don't think we need. But that's going to be involved with, with, uh, what I believe will convince you is adequate parking. Um, so we needed no requirement on that. If we keep going down the line, there's a whole list of, of, of regular criteria that we need. But there are certain things that you have to look at. One is density. So in density in this, they look at the size of the land and then they say X square feet per unit. That came up obviously at the referendum that we were having fifty-four units. The calculations we're going to go through, how much land we have, how much land per unit. So if you have a one-bedroom unit, they say X thousand square feet, a two-bedroom unit Y. And you multiply that out and you get that we'd need three hundred thousand square feet instead of two thirty, that's a variance. It's a variance that everybody recognized. It's a variance that everybody saw. It's a variance that Mr. Belden testified to in front of the council. That you can't have a LMI senior housing project with less than fifty units. Because that fifty units caps a very competitive financial market that doesn't allow, that just needs to hit the bigger projects. So all that was discussed, but that's a technical variance that we will go through.
Keep going now. Sure. So that, that, um, Mr. Chappelle mentioned building land where three hundred and sixty-four thousand square feet is required. Two hundred and thirty thousand, two hundred and eighty-one is proposed. The next is the building height. Uh, in the ordinance, there, what is required or allowed is two-point-five stories or thirty-five feet. Uh, we are proposing three stories or fifty-five feet. Which is from the average existing grade. And we have a slide that will show you, uh, where that, um, where that, uh, calculus is taken from. And what is the real perceived elevation from Bristol Ferry Road.
So long story short, Bristol Ferry is a few feet higher than, uh, where the corner of the building is. But they measure from existing grade. And that stops the developer from coming in and adding ten feet of fill. And then putting a thirty-five foot building because if it looks like a, if it sits on Mount Crumpet, it's a forty-foot build, right? So there's not any fill being added. It's just that existing grade slopes from west up. I guess from.
East to west.
East to west, away from the building. So at the front, we have an elevation. In the back, it's five or six feet lower. Our ordinance says go to the middle or average existing grade and go up. From Bristol Ferry, this is a, from the ground to the top, it's a forty-nine foot build. And it's three feet below the street, so it. Has the opposite of appearance of sitting on a hill. To some extent, it's sitting in a small ditch. From the back of the property, it's the full fifty-seven, fifty-eight feet. Uh, just like many of your houses, if you're built into a slope where you might have a walkout basement, so that's, they measure that average grade. But it does require variance. But again, this is the building, this is the building height. These are the exact discussions that we had when pitching fifty-four units. We could put two buildings. And get the rest of those units without having, uh, a height problem. If we did that, then we have no ball field, we have lot coverage issues and we have other variances. So all the king, I keep saying all the king's horses and men, but at the time, this was. The compromise and the decisions were made to pitch this to the town and the referendum. It was pitched as this three-story building at this height. We just now have all the final grades to give you.
Great. Thank you. Uh, the next, uh.
Parking spaces we'll come back to, but again, um.
For the record, one hundred and twenty-four are required for our multiple uses on the site and one hundred and seventeen are proposed. We have a parking space with, the ordinance requires ten-foot width for any parking stall. We're proposing nine to reduce the amount of impervious pay, paving. And to maximize the amount of parking we can get on the site and respect a lot of the site constraints. Uh, the ball field, septic and the existing building.
And again, I don't want to go out of order because I'm going to come back to parking. But I think you might ask this. Guys at ball fields that have kids all seem to drive vans and pickup trucks. Those are all ten-foot spaces. We haven't modified any of the spaces that are dedicated towards the recreational field. Regular conventional housing, the fourteen or spaces or so that are required for the traditional units. They're more likely to be of average age and drive a truck or a van. We haven't compromised the size of a single one of those spaces. But when we get to senior elderly houses, we notice that we have others. People are driving Priuses and Toyotas and Toruses. And the older I get, the faster I cash out my F-150 and start driving something a little smaller. So as a practical matter, these spaces are smaller. You should also know that both Tiverton and the Middletown have nine by eighteen. We happen to have a large ten-by-twenty space in Portsmouth. It isn't necessarily uniform throughout the state. So there are many of our communities that actually go nine by eighteen. We didn't change the length, I don't believe, because we had that, but we did change the width to nine in a practical place. Where the senior housing tend to be smaller cars. But I'll have Mr. Belden further address that.
Thank you. Uh, another, uh, modification is landscaping at the parking where ten percent is required. Less than ten percent landscape area is proposed within the parking area.
The only thing I want to say about this is that I asked, uh, Paul and the team. To just list anything that looks or smells like a variance. I think you'll find it's not a variance. What our parking variance says is if you have a parking lot of a hundred spaces or more. That parking lot will have interior landscape. We don't have a parking lot of a hundred spaces or more. We have four parking spots that when added together equal more than a hundred spaces. So individually, none of these would require that landscaping. And in fact, all the green area between them is probably, is substantially more than ten percent between them. But because the ordinance read a hundred parking spaces or more, we put it in there as a variance. I think you'll find we probably don't need one, but to the extent we did, we wrote it in there.
Um, there's also a provision where what, more than one building is proposed and erected on a lot. It should be separated from other buildings by minimum, uh, minimum of one hundred feet. And all buildings shall be setback a minimum of fifty-five feet from the center line of any interior way and thirty feet from any parking spot. So in a few slides, I'll show you where that, uh, we're, where we deviate from that. Where one hundred feet is required between buildings, ninety-five is proposed. Space between buildings and parking where thirty, uh, foot minimum is required, five is provided.
So that's the distance from the new building to the Anne Hutchinson School. Now, as it exists with that addition, it's going to be removed as soon as the senior center is done with it and, and moved over. That won't be anywhere near the larger variance it would be. But from the tip of the awning or the overhang, it's ninety-five feet. I think from the foundation, we had it, but because of the awning in the front of the building, well, it's not really an awning because it's not canvas, but because of the. What do we call it?
Porch.
Porch.
Covered porch.
Portico, whatever the word is. That's ninety-five feet away.
Correct. Um, there's a couple of architectural, uh, enassing requirements. Uh, no apartment building shall be less than sixty feet in length. No facade or any apartment building shall exceed a hundred and sixty linear feet without a building jog. Of at least forty-five degrees for two-wing building or thirty degrees for a three-wing building. So we're one hundred and sixty-foot length maximum without building jog is required. Two hundred and fifteen is provided. And I like to point that out that that is only on the north side of the building. Where it is not in view of the public right of way from Brownell Avenue, Brownell Lane, the ball field and/or. Bristol Ferry Lane. Um, we can easily make a modification to that if we feel that that is something that is important to the board. Um, we'd be glad to reconsider that. Um, no.
You know, that's probably also in relative proportion to the height limit of thirty-five feet. So if you're going higher proportionally, it doesn't look like this long obstructed. And it, in our, on the north side, I'm not sure I saw that. That view, but, uh, I think there's the south side, but you also have this horizontal breaks in the line. Do you have that on the north side as well?
Well, on the north side, we have. Yeah, that will happen on the, uh, on the north side as well. So if that is, that happens above the second floor. That's right. Yeah. Um, no one building shall contain more than twenty-four units. Uh, as Mr. Chappelle mentioned, we are proposing fifty-four units for the financial feasibility of the project.
And again, we, we could make two buildings. It's just that the referendum and the agreement was to. Instead stack them. You know, ordinances are at the long time ago. I'm not sure whether it actually makes sense to have two twenty-four unit buildings or one forty-eight unit building and have it higher. It's a function. How anti-height you are, I guess. I know that we are still looking up to a tower that's. Hundreds of feet below us, thousands of feet below us. Uh, it is an area that. It was industrial and has some pretty high buildings.
Thank you. Uh, there's another provision for curb cuts or an. Thank you. Uh, there's another provision for curb cuts or an egress and ingress from a site. For each lot, there shall be not, not more than one entrance and exit driveway. For each five hundred feet of the existing street on which the lot faces. The lot clearly faces Bristol Ferry Lane. Currently, there's two curb cuts. That people ingress and egress out onto a busy Bristol Ferry Lane. A few years ago, it was changed to be one lane in each direction with a turning lane, which I, I've driven that. Road twenty, for the past twenty years, we've experienced it in both four lanes and two lanes. And I must say, the two lanes is far better. It's, traffic's slower. It's easier to pull out onto Bristol Ferry Lane and turn off of.
And, and we're aware, obviously, that our IDOT has to approve this. Those of you that know the site now know that it was kind of before. Any type of regulation on Bristol Ferry Road. I call the curb cut starting at almost the beginning of the lot, ending almost at the end of the lot. Uh, it's really kind of a parking lot entrance. There's also, um, currently the two entrances on Brownell. So we are, there are less entrances than there were, and the traffic pattern is all designed to be just a north entrance. For, to get behind the building for the residents to park. That needs to make sense that they have their own entrance. And that's why that particular entrance proximity to the north boundary.
Yeah.
Uh, the other one is now centered. Uh, you, you all know the road as being a straight sightline road. It really goes right from the light. It turns into a couple of houses and then the brewery and then another house and then Brownell and then us. But there's a very good sight window there. Turn on a Brownell every day. It's not going to affect the traffic. Any different than it is now, except as to Bristol Ferry turning in a two-hundred-foot spot. They'll turn in two spots at thirty feet wide or.
Yeah, and th- those two, uh, two curb cuts are actually going to be further apart from one another than what they are now. Greatly making that a safer situation. Um, the few more things, there is, um, a provision that all, wherever possible, adjacent parking lots must be connected. Or in the case of a bacon commercial lot, which this doesn't apply to. A connection provided to that traffic may move between them, reducing traffic on arterial roadways. Here, we very specifically created, uh, parking fields or parking areas that are separated and designated. For specific uses. Um, and we think it works very well, and that provision isn't really applicable to this. To this commercial, as a commercial, uh, application.
And the logic, of course, is that the north parking field is for the residents of the, of the senior housing. The senior center and recreation made sense to connect that. Because either one of those could be used for still over shared parking for the other. Remember, your requirement for senior center is one per thousand, so we calculated that. A ball field really doesn't have a calculation in our ordinance. But we flew over with drones on Saturdays with two teams playing and two teams on deck and counted some twenty-eight cars. So by connecting those, a- and interesting what the drone showed is. On days where the senior center was filled and activity, the traditional hours of the senior center. Were not the same hours of Saturday when it, when the field is really done. It's just not a high senior center day that, kind of Monday for Friday, quite frankly. Um, and when the seniors, and when the ball field's high, the senior center's low, and when the senior center's high, the ball field's low. So connecting those and allowing shared parking just made a little bit of sense. So you could argue either one of them has twice the parking they need individually, but that's still. You could still, I guess, and, and the market units, we thought they should have a separate unit. Remember, market units are going to be a little bit of a separate condo association. They're going to be responsible for their own parking, including their own plowing. So to try to marry that has a number of its own issues.
Thank you. Um, along, there's one, two more that we will cover very quickly. There's a, a regulation for massing of a building should not extend beyond fifty feet to seventy-five feet without the facade being re-. Relieved with changes of wall plane that provide strong shadow or visual interest. We are, where that is required, we're proposing a little bit longer, a hundred and twenty-two feet approximately. Uh, and we can look at that in our elevation. But we've also provided a lot of relief in, um, on the east elevation as well as the south elevation. And then finally, it's a material request. Uh, the, the intent of the ordinance is to have more traditional. Uh, building materials, wood claps, fiber cement siding, stone veneer, brick and masonry. We are proposing a wood composite material, which isn't specified in the ordinance. But it, it's a wo- it's a, like a fiber cement composite but made of wood, and it is in the tradition of a clap siding. So.
It just didn't exist at the time the ordinance was done. It's, I believe this ordinance was kind of typical from not repairing vinyl siding. They didn't want vinyl siding and, and low-grade materials on the sides of the pillars. This is a high grade. It just didn't exist, and it's a wood fiber product that is designed to look like clapboard and, um, battened.
Yes, board and battened. Okay. I'll continue with a few more slides. Uh, I'm sorry for the people looking from abroad, uh, from, um, remotely. These are the last three ordinances that I, uh, provisions that I didn't, uh, pull up when we talked about them. But here, I'm not going to dwell on them, but there, I, we circled the areas where those dimensional. Uh, relief is being requested between the building and parking, five feet, nineteen feet, ten feet. Uh, and then ninety-five feet between two, uh, buildings. And again, tw- almost twenty-seven feet between the parking area number two and the market rate condos. And fifteen feet between market rate condos and parking area five. Next slide is showing the, the length of the facade that, uh, was uninterrupted with a massing bump out. At two hundred and fifteen feet on the north elevation. There is, uh, a covered porch, though, that reduces the length from one, from the furthest western corner. To a hundred and twenty-two feet, six inches. Uh, the curb cut areas that we've mentioned are Bristol Ferry, uh, road, right there. And then the last one is the parking fields, which we talked about having non-contiguous parking area. So there's three designated parking areas. Again, this is a dimensional, uh, relief being sought for the length of facade with unadorned. Um, articulation. I think, um, I won't spend too much time on the floor plans, but this here is a. There we go. The first floor plan showing in yellow the area of the, for the senior housing. Which has its own entrance on the south of facade. And then the more reddish-orange area, shaded area is the new senior center. And amenities for the senior housing. And they, there's two entrances there, one on the south side, which is a primary entrance. It's a covered entrance and then a covered patio out to a yard on the east side. Again, there's proposed forty-one bedroom apartments and fourteen two-bedrooms. The second, third, uh, floors are the same, identical, all residential. That extends over the, uh, Portsmouth Senior Center on the east side of the building. This here shows a typical one-bedroom and a typical two-bedroom apartment. This here is a, a little bit more of a detailed and large plan of the Portsmouth Senior Center. Show, showing the existing, uh, program spaces that are currently in the, uh, existing Portsmouth Senior Center. And what is being proposed now with the, after a year of work with the, almost a year of work with the Portsmouth Advisory Council, Senior Center Advisory Group.
You want to note the square footage is, if you look at the typical square bedroom of five hundred and eighty square feet. Our ordinance has a hotel room at four hundred and twenty feet. These aren't exactly large condominium houses. Uh, they are exactly what they are pitched to be. They are low to moderate income senior housing. For people who are going there, uh, later in life, not with a garage full of toys. And there's no storage space for them. These are the, that tells us a little bit about the type of people that you will have as neighbors. I know people are always concerned with LMI is on whether it's going to be a bunch of children and those things. These are very small, not. They're, they're, they're senior only, and they really are that house you move your parents into or, or home into, not. People that are going and having barbecues on the back deck.
And then finally, this here is the slide showing the east elevation along Bristol Ferry Road. Uh, as we mentioned before, on the, if you look to the right-hand side, the perceived, the actual elevation from grade. Which is a first floor elevation to the ridge is forty-nine feet. But the way it's calculated is from average grade, and if you go to the south elevation, the longer one. That really, as Mr. Chappelle mentioned, increases, the, the, the falling way grade increases. Or decreases the average height datum in which the building height is measured from. So at an average grade at one hundred and eight. Uh, we are asking fifty-five feet versus thirty-four, thirty-five, which is required or allowed in the ordinance.
The current building is forty, forty feet? Carnan Hutchinson Building, thirty-nine, forty?
Well, yeah, uh, not forty, but under, just on the high thirties, yeah. And what I would like to point out, something that's really dictating the, the, the location of where to start. The, the fir- finished floor elevation is the senior accessibility and, uh, accessibility code. To have a single floor entrance that really needs to be a grade, and it would be at the highest possible grade. Uh, at one hundred and fourteen, which is three feet lower than, uh, Bristol Ferry Road, as Mr. Pichelle Chappelle mentioned before.
We don't have people walking in the front entrance going down five steps to get to the first floor. Which we could do in a conventional building and still have half windows and light. It's just with senior housing, we need to keep that first housing, uh, without stairs, the first floor.
And that concludes my presentation. Um, and perhaps we could, uh, have Mr. Belden come and talk about parking.
Let's, um, if you're done, we'll just ask any members of the board for any questions. Mr. Harding.
I'm looking and projects like Kings Grant, um, and some of the retail stores. The back of the building, which is not shown on here, which the neighbor would be staring at. Um, you see the front of the building has these nice roof line changes and all this kind of stuff. And I've not been able to see what the back of the building's going to look like. I know the people at Kings Grant were very unhappy, uh, beautiful homes, and they looked at the back of a very bland thing. Some of the structures and projects we've given, the material on the back of the building was not the same as the front. And I would just like to know what's going on on the back of there.
The north elevation is going to be the same as the south elevation, same window fenestration. A pattern of two, one, two, one for the living rooms and bedrooms it ser- services. The material, the wood composite lap siding will be the same. The roof eve, as, uh, uh, Mr. Tibbitz asked about, will be the same. And, uh, there'll be a covered porch, which is, will be the same as what is on the south elevation as well. So very, very similar. Yeah.
Right.
That's right, because that, that adds adornment.
And we can bring a north elevation. Certainly will certify what the materials on that side.
Yeah.
Yeah.
This, this is designed for the.
But to, to further, to, to Mr. Harding's point, the, the, the edge of the roof line on the s-. A north side will simulate the same as the south side, so you have that shadow line. Correct. Okay, thank you.
Any other?
This is just for my understanding, because I'm new to the board. Who, sorry. Who maintains the senior center? Like, is that the town's responsibility to, like, clean and upkeep, or is that the church? Oh, you don't have to bring up somebody new, if we're getting to that later.
Well, the, the senior center is maintained by the town.
Okay, yeah, it was just for my understanding.
It's a hybrid, yeah, I'll have Mr. Belden explain. What happened is that we can, when there's financing to build senior. They allow a certain percentage of your space to be amenity space. So we were allowed to build at our cost, the maximum amenity space. The senior center wanted to be bigger than that, so there's a different funding to, to build the rest of it. And the town will actually occupy and lease that space.
I'll, I'll take it from here. Um, so the vast majority of the uses in the existing senior center. Are uses that are also typically constructed in any senior housing development that we would build. So, um, a library, a dining room, a kitchen, uh, a fitness area. Um, th- these are all things, a game room. Um, these are all things that, a multipurpose area. These are all things that, uh, the funders are all very used to seeing and paying to build. As a part of a senior housing development. And so this is why, when the town first approached us about this, uh, project. We thought, oh, yeah, this is something that absolutely makes sense, this marriage of use as a senior center and senior housing. Because we were going to build that stuff anyway, except for a couple of things. A thrift shop is atypical for senior, uh, housing. Uh, offices for the senior center staff are atypical. You wouldn't be building offices for another organization in your senior housing. So that's why there are the two components of the senior center. There's the lighter orange space, which is going to be a condominium. That will be, uh, given to the town. Actually, we'll probably raise funds and then give the funds to the town. The town will pay us for the condo. That's the technicality. It'll be no cost to the town. Um, and then the rest of the senior center area will be constructed, um, and maintained as a part of the senior housing. That being said, the entirety of the space will be, uh, rented to the, the senior center group. And they'll provide a service agreement to us to manage the space. So, um, you know, they will be responsible for paying the utilities in that portion where the condo is. Just as they pay their utilities now, um, but not for the, the senior housing part of it. Um, if a light bulb goes out in the non-condo part, our maintenance guy will go in there and change the. Because it's a part of the senior housing, uh, component. So really, it reduces the expense to the senior, the senior center group itself. And removes the, uh, vast majority of the maintenance expense. Because right now, the town has been maintaining and, uh, doing upkeep and improvements. For the entirety of the existing senior center at the town's expense, not collecting any rent from the senior center. And so, uh, the town will, uh, my understanding, not to speak for the town, but the agreement that we've all discussed. Is that the town will lease that condo component to the senior center group. As we will lease the, um, the remainder of the space to them as well at no cost. I know it's a little bit complicated, it's just because, you know, the funding that we typically access is used to only paying for the stuff. That is typical for senior housing. We, however, um, have had constructive conversations. Uh, with the Office of Housing and Community Development about community development, block grant funds. To pay for the construction costs associated with the senior center condo.
Good? Yeah, it's okay. Any other questions? All right.
So, uh, I will go to the parking analysis that we did.
All right. Well, I'll start with the parking analysis. So whenever you do a parking analysis, the first thing you do is look at our zoning ordinance. And say, what would generally be required of a developer under our ordinance? And between that, this ordinance and the zoning ordinance, you can find that we have kind of three uses. We have a ball field, we have a senior center, and we have actually four uses. Because we have the senior living, and then we have the, uh, conventional non-LMI units. So let's start with that. When you have, um, two-bedroom and, and three-bedroom conventional units, six of them. Our ordinance just calls out how many spaces. There are spaces for guests. That particular space, I believe, would require fourteen spaces. We have sixteen, because we had the room. And they are full nine by ten. Not only no variance required, but none. Uh, none necessary went more. Why go more? Because we could. And also because the reality is, if the senior center is ever used for something. whether it's a voting booth, like it has been used in the past, everybody's gonna park everywhere. You might as well have some paved areas to do that. Then we looked at the, most importantly, the biggest component is the senior housing. When you have a one-bedroom unit, you're required to have one parking space per unit. Since there's forty-one bedroom units, that would be forty spaces. When you have one and a half, you need one and a half spaces for two bedrooms. So we take the fourteen two-bedrooms, multiply it by the one and a half, it's seven. Now forty plus seven is forty-seven. They also have a guest provision saying for every five units, you should have one. That adds up to another eight. And for the two-bedroom units, it's slightly different, adds up to another six. And together, there would be seventy-five spaces. So again, Christian is, is involved with LMI housing. So he went to, I believe, the three other, why don't I take it from there? But the, the analysis you've done on your three other age-restricted, low-to-moderate-income housing facilities that are built and run, what they're using for parking according to not only our surveys and aerials and our counts, but going to the property managers and asking them if they think what is enough.
That's correct. You'll see on the right side of the screen, on this right side of the slide, you'll see five of our senior housing properties. Anthony House, Mumford Manor, Harbor House, Belleville House, and West House. There are seventy units at Anthony House, thirty-four at Mumford Manor, thirty-eight at Harbor House, thirty-six at Belleville, and fifty at West House. So just about two-hundred-and-fifty senior housing apartments that we have developed and own. And if, on the next slide, you'll see the first analysis that we did was just to look at aerial photos and count the number of cars parked in the lots. And you can see that from the aerial photos, for Anthony House, there were thirty-one cars parked. At Mumford Manor, there were sixteen. Harbor House, there were seventeen. Belleville House, there were sixteen. West House, there were twenty-one. And so you can see here, again, on the right side, that that averages out to point four-four, well, it's point four-four cars per unit at Anthony House, point four-seven cars per unit at Mumford, point four-five at Harbor House, point four-four at Belleville House, and point four-two at West House, which comes out to an average of point four-five for all of our senior housing units. That is the actual need based on the aerial photos. But then we thought, well, what if the, the aerial photo wasn't taken on a very representative day? And so we went to the property manager, and we asked them for every property. What is the, the maximum need for parking spaces that you have? In case, you know, there are guests, there's the landscaper is there, there's visiting nurses, there's every, what are the maximum parking spaces that you need at these facilities? And for Anthony House, where we have the seventy apartments, they said you need forty-seven spaces. At Mumford Manor, where we have thirty-four apartments, they said twenty-two spaces. Harbor House, twenty-four spaces. Belleville House, thirty spaces. West House, twenty-nine spaces. Those come out to an average of point six-seven spaces per unit. And so that is what we have used. That is our real-world need for parking at senior affordable housing, because we have it. We own it, we maintain it, we know what the actual parking demands are at senior affordable housing. And so that's point six spaces per unit, which you take that and you multiply it by the, the fifty-four proposed units at the Anne Hutchinson School. And that gets you to thirty-six parking spaces for those fifty-four units, which is what we're proposing. We also, you know, the market-rate condos, we did this, we just used the town's requirements of one-point-seven-five spaces per two-bedroom unit. We're proposing four of those, that's seven spaces. Two spaces per three-bedroom unit, we're proposing two of those, that's four spaces. Two guest spaces per five two-bedroom units, that comes out to two more spaces. Three guest spaces per five three-bedroom units, that comes out to one more space for a total of fourteen spaces for the market-rate condos. We proposed sixteen. And then the senior center, we simply looked at the existing parking that was there and and realized that we needed thirty-six. Actually, this is based on the, the town's requirement.
Town's requirement, we want for a thousand square feet of gross floor.
That's right. And that comes out to thirty-six spaces total. And then, as Mr. Chappelle mentioned, we were in contact with the Portsmouth Little League. They told us to do a drone flyover on Saturday, May fourteenth, that this would be a representative day to do a parking count. We took this picture and we counted twenty-eight spaces. Now, we're proposing a hundred and seventeen spaces total, which means that we're proposing thirty-six spaces for the senior housing, sixteen spaces for the condos, thirty-six spaces for the senior center, and twenty-nine spaces for the ball field, which is one more than the twenty-eight that we saw parked there on this Saturday morning when there was a ball game in play. So hence, the variance requested to allow a hundred and fourteen spaces or a hundred and twenty-four would be required.
I also remind you that if you, if you look back at that, the one we did for the ballpark, can you bring that one back up?
This is the ballpark.
Okay. There's twenty-eight cars in that. That includes the one on Brownell Lane and includes the ones parked in front, which may be there for senior center or something. We assumed all of them over the ball field. But it also tells you shared parking. There's a guy that's gonna park outside the fence on Brownell, because he can sit in his car and watch without getting it out. They always have, they always will. And there are people that are gonna park close, and there's people that may park in front and, and take that shorter route to the other side. So traditionally, that has happened. Again, I think we overcounted the ball field. And when you add these together, and we're always here on shared parking, I think it's a very logical shared parking. If it's a hundred and twenty-four total, and we have a hundred and seventeen, when our figures suggest we need less than that, I think that, I think the grounds for the variance are accepted. Well, and there's a possibility the town may actually put that same type of parking on Brownell, because you'd have it there aiming at the field, which, as long as it's not aiming at the left-field wall, it's not a bad place to park. I guess we'd like to do it better.
Any, any questions for any board members on the parking analysis?
I don't have a parking question, but I just, just picking up, I, I know you mentioned you talked to Portsmouth Little League, which is great. I think that you, did they, did they talk with you about the fact that they have power at the field right now? Like, will they have power when the field is moved over?
So again, that part of the development won't be church community housing. We are, we've done preliminary engineering to show that the ball field can be relocated. If the town decides to relocate it, the town will do that itself. And so whether, you know, the, they have power now, and the town provides power still, will be a decision that the town will make. I would expect if they have been providing power at the ball field, that they would continue to provide power at the ball field. I don't know if there is power there. I
I think there is in these pitching machines, which is why everybody loves it. But I will tell you, you can't be further away at home plate or pitcher's mound than you are now. And if the town wants power, they'll be going fifty feet from the road instead of three hundred feet from the road. So I would suggest logically that it's not going to be one of the greatest concerns of whether that happens.
Okay. And so just so I understand, it's absolutely the town that's maybe doing the baseball field. In no way are you guys, like, building the baseball field.
Now, again, when we first started discussions about this project with the town, they, the ball field was going to be eliminated at this site, and the town was gonna build it a new ball field somewhere else. It was only once we realized that we could probably relocate the ball field here onsite and that that mix of uses, children and the elderly, was beneficial, that we proposed that we try to save the ball field and keep it here. So yes, it has always been that the ball field would be done by the town.
Our site work is obviously gonna be pitching in, because we're right there with site work. The Phil, for instance, is gonna come from our whole, so it'll be a concerted effort. But if the project is theirs to do and ours to assist.
Yeah, we're certainly not gonna try to not cooperate.
But when you're doing site work, that'll, logically, there's gonna be places where you'd put more.
Good, good. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just wanna, I think, go through some of the specifics. So with that, I would call Mr. Darvo from Darvo Land Surveying, Inc. And again, he has testified before this board and other boards in the past, certified as an expert, as a land surveyor and septic designer.
Yes, class-two septic designer.
Do you want to qualify him as a witness? I, I see he does have a stamp on his plan, so I'm assuming he is a registered land surveyor in the state of Rhode Island.
I am for the past fifteen years and previously worked under a land surveyor for about twenty-five years.
Can we get a motion to, to accept Mr. Deveraux as a expert?
I'll make a motion to accept him as an expert land surveyor in the state of Rhode Island.
Thank you.
All right. We have a motion made in second. All favor say aye. I think motion carries.
So all these guys say, this is what I'd like to build, and here's what I want it to look like. And then they hand it to you and say, now make it fit.
It was a challenge.
Tell us how you did it.
Okay. What I'd like to do is just talk about the existing site. Some of the features or some of the points that may have been missed. I'm gonna try not to repeat what's been said already. So I've been going through my notes and checking off items as they've been speaking, so I apologize. So the site slopes from Bristol Ferry Road down to the west, to the west property line, is about twenty-eight feet of grade difference on the site. So that averages out, sounds like a lot, but it's a pretty long site, east to west. That's about four to five percent slope, so it's, it's not a severe slope. It's not steep slopes and so forth, very workable slopes. But there is an average of about four or five feet with that. Regarding the existing building that's on the site now, it's eleven thousand, one-hundred-and-ninety square feet. There's thirty-five thousand and change square feet of pavement, so just over an acre of impervious area. We'll talk about that when I talk to drainage improvements later on. So just as a point of reference, it's about an acre of impervious area that's creating stormwater runoff currently on the site. Okay? Regarding the existing site for parking, we went out, we actually located all of the parking spaces that are striped out there and so forth. There are sixty-four spaces, as mentioned. Seven handicap space to the north side of the building. Those are ten-foot wide on average, each one of those. There's nineteen spots that are ten feet wide. They're in front of the senior center where there's circulation around it. All the remaining spots, there's forty-five of them, are nine feet wide. So I just wanted to point that out, because I know we're asking for some variances on that and so forth.
Most of them are already at that width at stripe.
Correct. And the average depth of all those parking spots is eighteen feet, by the way, also. Okay? And we have twenty on all of our proposed ones, which is what's required. We did perform some soil testing when we first started the project to see what the soil conditions are like, see if there was ledge, you know, so on, and what kind of constraints. We dug down about six test soil evaluations. A class-four soil evaluator licensed by the state came out, looked at the soil test holes and so forth. There was no ledge at eight to ten feet deep on average. So that was great. I thought there would be a big issue with ledge on that site. There is no ledge. That was great. The average water table is three to four feet. So that poses a few challenges, so we can't do a lot of cutting to level off a ball field and so forth. So we took that into account with the design of the site as we went forward, the building design and so forth. There's no wetlands on site or in the immediate vicinity and so forth that are any concern of the site. So in general, I think that's the, the site, adding on what everybody else has spoken about earlier. In regards to what we are proposing, just a few other highlights, I guess. On our proposed site plan, one of the items that hasn't been mentioned yet tonight, when we designed this whole site, is almost smack in the middle of this site, there's this large thirty-inch tree near where the center field outfield is of the ball field and back of the and I was, I was given orders to save that tree. So a lot of how all of this developed was around that tree, so just so you know. And we've incorporated a recreational area, I guess, if you want to call it, where we've relocated the bocce courts in that area. There's a gazebo proposed there for the senior housing and so forth. And we've taken that tree into account with the layout of the driveways, the parking, and so forth. So just wanted to point that out, that that hasn't been pointed out yet today. In regards to the parking, I think that's been defined and spoken about and so forth. I just wanted to note that where the northerly senior housing parking is proposed, we did provide on the west end of that area a T-turnaround, so that a fire truck, potentially a moving van, if somebody's moving in or something like that, can pull in, back out, and then have, be able to drive out. They don't have to back out into Bristol Ferry Lane with a large vehicle. We have to do, I think, some tweaking of that. We've had with the report from the fire department.
Yeah, I know the fire department's here too, but as you know, all of these plans go out to the various departments doing Department of Transportation and Public Works, I'm sorry, the police department and the fire department. The fire department has got back to us, and they have a couple of concerns that we're gonna address at preliminary. One is, if you look at the plan, you cannot drive to the west side of the building. And I believe that for fire and emergency purposes, they want to be able to pull a fire truck through the parking lot and turn and get it to the west side. And that's gonna extend a piece of pavement in that direction. We believe we can do it, as long as it doesn't extend a straightaway of a hundred and fifty feet. You don't need to turn around at the end of it. We have room to do that, but it's more impervious, and it affects drainage, which again, comes at preliminary. But that is one requirement. The second requirement noted by the fire department was the front of the buildings. The front of the building, it right now has pavement right to it, so obviously you could get to the front of the building. But now, because of how green we're trying to make this look from Bristol Ferry, that's all open garden-looking. And the fire department is concerned with whether or not a ladder truck could get to that third floor. So we may have to put in a kind of a swept frontage road, or may have to put in some fire lanes that cut in from the north and, and south parking lots, so that they can pull in and reach a ladder truck. We're gonna have to have those conversations and get back to you live. Haven't heard from the police yet, but we expect that they'll be okay. Because they don't seem to have a tremendous interest, except for traffic flow, which really seems to be much better than it.
Since you opened the door in the fire department, I don't want to keep our, our fire department rep waiting any longer. Is it possible we could hear, hear? Please, please come up. I, I assume you're here to testify in this petition. Can we get your name, address, and, and your position with the fire department?
Sure. Good evening. Andrew White, Thirteen Sullivan Lane, Bristol, Rhode Island. Fire inspector, Assistant Deputy State Fire Marshal of the state of Rhode Island. And I'm here representing the fire department. It's like Mr. Chappelle said, we do have a couple of access issues as it's currently presented. It wouldn't fully comply with the town ordinance in terms of foresighted access for a commercial building of twenty thousand square feet or greater, obviously. There are some reasonable solutions here, particularly in the west side. That seems like a pretty straightforward fix. On Bristol Ferry roadside, we may have some maneuvering we may need to do. Or if it really came to it, you know, would they have to go down the road of an ordinance in order to, to comply fully? They're not getting within the ten feet as currently presented, as a fire lane is required on those four sides. We would also need additional access, in particular to wherever the fire department connection would be, and that relates to the sprinkler room. So that's another part that, you know, wasn't fully, wasn't, wasn't fully communicated in the plan in terms of where So that's another part that, you know, wasn't fully, wasn't, wasn't fully communicated in the plan in terms of where that sprinkler room would be located. So we're unsure of where that's going to be. But again, there, there are solutions here. There's, there's a reasonable path, I think, in both, both regards. But I just wanted to make sure that, you know, everyone was on the same page and at Mr. Lizinski's request, decided to show up and just make sure that we were clear in terms of what was going to be required or what, and what the ordinance reads, as you all well, well aware.
Thank you. Hold on one second. Let's see if any members have any questions for you.
Would a, just as an emergency access road is a gravel but still pervious path, could on the west side instead of pavement, something like that?
Sure. According to the ordinance, gravel is not permitted. So I can just tell you what the ordinance says as of right now, I guess, is where we're at. Yeah.
But as the ordinance is written.
Right.
I think my humble suggestion would be that any master plan approval is not approved from the fire department. At preliminary, that is actually addressed the concern.
Sure. Anything else for the board?
Not much different than all right, you know, DOT, if we have to say that.
Sure. So Fire Marshal White, I, you didn't see anything that was insurmountable? I want to put words in your mouth.
Yeah, yeah. No, no, that's accurate. Yeah, there's a couple paths here and it'd just be depending on what design makes sense for them in terms of how we fully accomplish it. But there's, there's reasonable ways to get there, I believe. Okay.
That wouldn't change the location of the building?
Right, right. Yeah, it doesn't totally affect it.
Mr. Divat, you have a question?
I'm sorry, for that west side access, were you looking for a through route access or just access from that back end, as long as if that road just?
So ideally, yes. A throughway would be ideal for fire department operations. That being said, it wouldn't, access by extending through that kind of T that's set up already, extending it south would accomplish that fourth sided access, if that makes, if that makes sense. Okay?
Would it be possibly gated only for emergency access, only because otherwise the families going to the sports fields or whatever would be zipped around the back of the senior center and parking in there and all that stuff?
So that'd be a separate discussion, I think. It would something we'd have to kind of contemplate depending on usage of the field, the times and, you know, whether that gate and or locking device would create more of an issue for us, you know, I don't know. Maybe it can be accomplished through signage or some other measure, but.
I would say we'd have absolutely no objection to signage to make that north parking lot exclusively for residents. I think that's a benefit for the neighbor too, because the neighbor doesn't necessarily want all the traffic on Saturday morning. Parking lot's half full because it's more than adequate, that's fine, but if he had all the kids in the background at 8:00 in the morning, he may not. I think that's what he has now, quite frankly, because he has a complete. If he has a concern with that, we could certainly make that exclusive.
Okay.
Great. Any other questions for Fire Marshal?
I, I just had a clarifying one, which I think I, we got an email about this before, so I read it and I was just going back to it. So the issue about the ladder being able to reach the third floor, that was access, like that, that was at the issue.
That's Bristol Ferry roadside access, correct. Yeah, so that's an issue where there's a couple of different paths to maybe accomplish that, whether, as Mr. Chappelle said, maybe a throughway completely or some sort of other mechanism to, to really, the central part of that building on the third floor to be able to get the ladder to access to that. And that could just be a calculation of depending on the positioning of the ladder truck, having a clear access with the ladder to reach that point, so.
Ironically, it would be okay if we put the building at the minimum front, but by kind of designing it far away and having a pretty front yard and garden. I think, I think what it's planned was fail to consult early, so we'll be able to work on it.
Any other questions? So just, go ahead.
Just a thing, I have facilities at Undersea Water, so now we got a lot of parking issues there. I say a couple of things, like saying if you, if you don't have through access, whether you do or you don't, to the parking concern. Saying no parking is limited effective if there's not a parking, starts to approach to the parking count. To say fire lane, express access, those things make a big difference. So.
And it would be a fire lane, so we would have to market that. We couldn't all.
Right. We're, we're actually currently demolishing our through road now. We're taking it out. It's not a three story building concern, but we still wanted potential access for the fire department on that side of, of the building. So we've got a pervious paper walk, walkway essentially, everybody, for all intensive purposes thinks it's a walkway. But it is actually the width for a fire truck and, and the weight load distribution or a fire truck could use that route as well.
Any other questions for Fire Marshal White? Do you have anything else for us?
No, thank you so much.
Thank you for coming.
Appreciate your time. Thank you.
Appreciate it. What I would like to do is maybe get a motion to accept the, the fire department's written opinion of, of June 6th as exhibit two.
And if I can just say, you know, on the bottom of that, I did say not to move forward, given just the circumstance, how it is, you know, not in compliance fully with the ordinance. But again, I think we're on a path that, you know, whatever steps we need to take, I think we'd make that on the following.
Yes, I think, well, I, just one, one second. So I, that's why I asked you the, your opinion. You didn't see anything that was insurmountable to.
No.
Yes, so I thank you for that. Okay.
Yeah, appreciate it. Thank you.
So let's move forward with accepting this as exhibit two. Do you have a motion?
I'll, I'll make a motion to accept, accept the fire department opinion by the fire marshal as exhibit two.
Okay, I've got a motion made in second. All favor say aye?
Aye.
Okay. One last comment on that T turnaround. We were also looking to do that as access to the ball field, mowing the field and that type of thing. So there's going to be a grass kind of ramp area so that it's not too steep or so forth. It would be accessible to the ball field also. We'll work with the fire department to make something work that'll be in that area. So in regards to the parking spaces, again, I don't know if I have to reiterate the fact that the ones, the sites, the spaces that we're requesting nine foot, footers for are in front of the senior center entrance and in the rear or the north side where the senior housing is, where the market rate, those are 10 footers. Where the ball field parking area is, those are 10 footers. We've got all 20 foot deep parking spaces. We're not looking for that area. We've also made each lane and driveway 24 feet wide. I believe your ordinance requires less than that. I've history, my experience is that it's kind of tight if we do a little less than that. So I wanted to just make that point that we did make them a little bit wider.
The wider the turning areas and the areas, the easier to get in.
Yeah, on your back and then out. Correct. Okay. Regarding the septic system, we've shown an area to the northwest, the rear of the building. That is contemplated to be a treated class one septic system, more than likely a bottomless sand filter type. If we can go with a geomat or something that's grass, obviously that would be preferable. Bottomless sand filters take, tend to take up less space than a geomat, so there's a trade off and we'll have to balance that. A new GST system that's just been approved last year is a little bit of a hybrid between the two, so that may be a good option. But the idea that we've discussed is to try to break up different parts, the market rate condos, put that in a separate system. Potentially the senior center in a different system, maybe even the kitchen area and so forth, separate systems. Just so that it's not just all one big system functioning and if, God forbid, the pump were to get clogged or something on a particular day, the whole building is, is out of, you know, septic use and so forth. So that's the concept and the thoughts. Obviously, at preliminary, we'll have more detail and so forth on that.
We've dedicated the space for it, and we have the space for it, and we have the water table test for it. The actual designs will be doing and be ready for preliminary.
I believe so, yes.
We did have a question talking to a neighbor. Obviously, we have requirements that are septic effluent, does not flow on the neighbor's property either above or below ground. Any opinions on whether or not that system in that west, lower west, north corner will flow to the north or west and leave the property affecting in any way the neighbor's property and their ability to develop their own property?
Don't believe it will. It will meet all DEM's requirements and regulations that are obviously there for the public safety and.
Including the setbacks from the property.
Correct.
And when we look, when you're done, I'm going to.
Okay, so the last item I wanted to touch on was stormwater controls. Previously, I'd stated there's about an acre of impervious surface area now. Based on what we're proposing, the buildings are going to be about 26,000 square feet. The rest of the 90,000 square feet of impervious that we're going to have in total or pavement area in total is basically the driveways, the parking areas and so forth. What I'm getting at, I guess, leading to, is that we would like to be able to do some type of in-ground infiltration, recharge the, you know, the aquifers, get the stormwater dispersed throughout the site if possible, right? Take the condo building, put that into an area somewhere with some rain gardens, maybe of some infiltration system or something. Break up some of the parking areas, right? Basically, you like to disperse it throughout the site. If for some reason we can't do all of that because of the grading with ball field, so on and so forth, we've got the option of doing pervious pavement with the paved areas. And if you look at the amount of pavement that we have, we would actually reduce the amount of stormwater that would be generated and so forth, right? Because all we would have is the two building footprints, which is 26, 27,000 square feet, where currently it's over an acre, over 45, 42,000 or so square feet of impervious area. So that's a solution. It's not the best solution, in my opinion, for different reasons. But that's also something that we'll work with. Obviously, we need DEM approval, DOT approvals for this and so forth. And town, DPW approval, I would imagine, right?
Also, there is a specific site condition under this particular ordinance that we are going to meet and not ask for any variance on. In subsection K drainage, the developer shall provide for adequate drainage and shall further provide that the rate of runoff from the property shall not increase during construction or after completion of the development to the detriment of surrounding properties. So we have a standard that we need to meet and in some cases is similar to what we have in all of our other ordinances, in some cases even more stringent, zero increase. So we'll be prepared to show you that when the time comes. And again, those important areas that affect the neighbors, in those areas, we're hoping we're not asking for any variances. I do want to go over a couple of the site plans, specifically the north, because there's a neighbor to the north that, that I guess we can call most affected. Only because, I'm not saying the neighbors across Bristol Ferry aren't affected, but there's a large front yard setback. Then there's a four lane street or two lanes and now breakdowns and emergencies, but a wide street. And then there's either the trailer park or some houses across the road. The other side is Brown and L Lane, which again, has wide setbacks and the width of the road. But to the, and, and to the, to the west is the ball field and quite frankly, the largest green areas we have to offer to neighbors in the greatest buffer. But to the north, there is a requirement of a 25 foot setback. Can I start with, did you design it so that the building in all cases was further away than 25 feet, the minimum required in our ordinance?
The minimum building setback to the north property line is 31 feet.
Now, that's at the closest point at that front wing, but the majority of this building and the majority of the units are set back substantially further than that. Is that right?
That's correct.
Okay. Do you have an average measurement on that?
Actually, I don't. It would be 20, 40, 64, 70, 80, it's about 100, about 100 feet, about 100 feet or so.
Substantial for development that often allows something to be just 25 feet away. Now, we also looked at that being a parking area and certainly parking areas can have lighting and things that are offensive. This is the parking just for the residents. I know it's not fully designed, but the lighting is the minimum that's required under safety lighting. It's what we call dark sky compliant. It's designed not to be high. It's not designed to aim at anyone. Unlike the types of lights that were put on the side of buildings when things were built in 1928 and 1954 and national grid security lights. Is that right?
Yes.
So there clearly is going to be light from windows of occupants and TVs and things, but, but the parking lot itself has the minimum lighting requirement of the, of the dark sky compliant, correct?
It'll meet the requirements of the town.
And then when we were here last time, and even before that meeting, we looked at what was presented originally to the town and we saw the areas for recycling and refuse, and they were closer to the property line in our original proposal. Is that right?
It was originally, yes.
At everyone's request, where have you moved those and now how have we designed to screen those so that neighbors won't deal with either the aesthetics of seeing dumpster or the smell of them?
So we've broken up the, we call it recycling dumpster areas, I guess, into three locations. There's one that is to the far west of the main building, right at where that T turnaround is going to be. That will, is envisioned to be for the majority of the senior housing residents. There's a second, smaller recycling area to the west of the, I think it's the thrift shop, if I recall. The part that jets to the north of the main building. And that is for the seniors, is, is, it's envisioned to be for the senior center, that, that section of the building and so forth. The third area is kind of on the bend of the central parking area, opposite the market rate condos, and that area is going to be for the market rate condos. We've tried to put that away from the main rear of that old schoolhouse so that there can be some green space off of those market rate condos and it's not right there out of their windows. Union Studios has provided some proposed screening that they've used on other projects in the past. It's, do you know, it's not in here. Oh, okay.
There's a pretty fencing picture in the package. I should also remind you that some of the other concerns that we hear when dumpsters are anywhere near any type of areas. And remember, every commercial area in town abuts a residential area. It's just our nature of our commercial things. So we deal with the dumpsters quite a bit. Dumpsters have to follow the noise ordinance. There's a specific area in town where every time a dumpster is dumped before 7 o'clock AM when the decibel meter has to be in a residential zone, 55, I think, instead of 60. There's a, there's a call, all the dumpsters get cited, the dumpster people get cited. They all have GPS tracking in their cars. They do not operate before 7:00 AM in the morning. Interesting though, as a planning board and a comprehensive permit, you're allowed to put conditions on plans. So if you specifically thought that emptying of the dumpster or something like that was not to be done at 8 o'clock until the north side, we just have to deal with waste management and tell them that's one of our requirements. They start in town at 7:00 AM bright here, as you know, but my house is 2 o'clock there. It just matters where you are. But if you make it a condition, if that is a condition, I, I think we've solved the aesthetic issue of the dumpster. But trucks coming in in the morning, I think, are always an issue. So if you find that to be an issue, just give us some time control. And I think it may be more appropriate after hearing from neighbors or maybe at preliminary stage. I don't know if you get into that nitty gritty here at Master, but we certainly have no objection and safeguard that will help the neighbors. Right? I believe that is Mr. Cool's turn.
Hold on one second. We might, let's see, any board members?
I've got one. So, so I know, we'll go back to the ball field. Okay, the ball field is responsibility of the town. Got it. But you know the topography. I'm just looking at, it's a, it's a constraint, you know, from the edge of the parking lot to the edge of the property line. Looks like a couple hundred foot radius and I'm looking at maybe 12 foot grade increase. And I'm more of a soccer, street hockey guy, not a good, thinking that's, you know, 12 feet grade increase. And you, I think you kind of hit it at the cut and fill restrictions with the water table. So what are your thoughts on how this would really look to make it viable for the town? I don't know if you consulted them yet.
I think that's the issue. I think when we looked at it originally, I'll let Kristen correct me because I know we talked to the administrator. But everybody wanted a ball field that you could build for $10. But because of the topography, that backside. But because of the topography, that backside, either retaining wall, retaining wall can be eighty percent the cost of a ball field, right? I mean, that's the thing. So that's what they're looking. If that retaining wall makes sense to them to keep the ball field here. That was the nature of the discussion as it was related.
So that might be, is that, is that a retaining wall depicted? I wasn't sure if that was just the fence.
So there's actually two retaining walls. Adjacent to the parking area and the walkway that's where the, the right field outfield is, that's a retaining wall so that we could cut the ball, the outfield down a little bit, okay? That's, that's like a, I believe that says a three-foot-high wall there, which is on the outside of the fence area of the outfield.
So, so you're showing, and my mind is showing the existing topography lines underlying that, but you would maybe be able to bring it down three feet here, up three feet there.
Well, we're cutting three feet in the outfield. Then the slope comes away towards home plate, drops down. There is another wall outside of the playing area. That, it's a little hatched area on the play, on my proposed site plan. It may not be, which was part of the, I believe it should be part of the packet submission and so forth. Okay. So, trying to see how. Over to the west of the ball field, about twenty or thirty feet over, is a retaining wall, says, there's a little note, says proposed retaining wall. That's, at the high point, that's like eight feet high or so. So that's a significant fill there. Again, we were limited with the ball field for the slope, you know, and we cut as much as we could on the high side, and we just did what we could for the low side, unfortunately. It fits, you know, that there's enough area and so forth. The topography's not great for a ball field on the, on the site. It's kind of the realistic reality of it, you know? But it works, right? You can, you can design and engineer just about anything, unfortunately. You know, these days, it's a matter of cost and so forth. So we've shown it, we've shown that it does work. And it's this exact same ball field size that's there now, that we've just moved over and placed in, in that location.
I didn't see your question, Mr. Cool.
Yeah.
Sure, that's one that I'm considering. We just have a size, then obviously that natural grade of sloping could be done in the grass.
Yeah, yeah, this. Well. That's what I'm told. I don't know the town that well. That's why I can't comment on that.
Didn't exist at first, because of our offer of lending. And now it's been had one over there, blending recreation and not private use just. So either way, it's gonna be a blended recreation. That's probably most.
Yeah, that was the only thing I was gonna reiterate, is that whether or not the town decides to keep the ball field, they have indicated that there will be a town rec use of that area that will still bring children to the site to have that marriage of populations on site.
Yeah. Probably the least fan of all electric cars in this room, but with seniors and their Priuses and market rate condominiums, what are you guys doing for charging stations? Which is a big part of the future as things are going, especially since it's seniors, independent, senior center and marketplace with all different rooms. How's that problem getting solved?
I think it's a great question, but it's come across my desk two or three times because our zoning ordinance was written in the year one, and they didn't, for instance, have solar, and they didn't, for instance, have wind towers. And whether a golf, indoor golf facility is not a golf course or a movie theater, so what is? Those are allowed as a matter of right, right now, at our service stations. I don't think necessarily that the future is going to be electric chargers at service stations. Right now, in zoning, that's where they're allowed, until someone takes the position that they can be put at the libraries, at the restaurants, at senior housing, at the town hall. And that's coming to a theater near us because we have this ordinance that says we're not gonna let the zoning board draw any analogies, so we're gonna have to give a specific ordinance. But they face that, that's come up in tibeter.
Anything else, Mr. Harding?
No, I still haven't got the answer, but I guess it's to be determined.
I think what any, what most builders are doing is when they're doing their electrical work, they are accounting for conduit and electrical systems that can accommodate the needs in the future.
Okay, thank you.
And we'll, and we can, we can address that with utilities.
Yeah, I mean, I, I would say, just to keep in mind that this is affordable senior housing. We have not seen a strong demand for electric car charging at our facilities yet. I think the, the price of electric vehicles is still premium above internal combustion vehicles. But as Mr. Chappelle just pointed out, we are building in the capacity for easier charging hookups when we're doing the wiring now.
Thank you. I think we're good. Any other questions for Mr. Debo? All right, thank you.
Thank you. My final witness would be Mr. Cool. Again, you all know Mr. Cool has testified as a expert before this board in the areas of real estate and land appraisal.
That's true.
And it's the same Mr. Cool that we previously swore in.
Earlier, that's right. There is that. Okay, so.
We get a motion to recertify Mr. Cool?
I'll make a motion to recertify Mr. Cool, as we did the previous petitioner.
All right, we have a motion made in second, all in favor, say aye. Aye, motion carries.
Jim, it's getting late, so I'm.
Very brief.
When, when, what I really want you to address is the housing needs in Portsmouth that you have found, and the, what this particular project will do for that, and generally the effect on these projects and neighborhoods.
Okay. So essentially, what we have is a situation that's been well described to you, you know, in, in detail. But we have in Portsmouth, as a court said when we, when he first started speaking, only two-point-eight percent of the mandated ten percent of our housing stock in Portsmouth is affordable. So we're in a situation where we really need to add affordable housing. That's become really, that point has really been hammered home over the last couple of years as we've seen values, you know, really rise dramatically. For the, the population is graying. The concept of having elderly housing is very, very important to the town. The idea of having elderly subsidized is, is really a winner overall. So when I look at it, I, I looked at the comprehensive land use plan, and really, it's clear that in Portsmouth, we have all kinds of references within our plan specifically for elderly and for subsidized housing, for elderly housing. I looked at the housing, the housing, the first goal that comes up is to encourage a diversity of housing opportunities, work towards consideration of the special needs for elderly, handicapped, private housing opportunities for the elderly, disabled, low, moderate income that meet the needs of those qualified. When you look further down in section four of housing, they have a series of objectives. Objective one is, we express a desire to have affordable housing. Our intention to work with federal, state, and charitable organizations to promote affordable housing, to encourage initiative from all the organizations. Objective two, address housing constraints and cost enforcement that li, limit housing availability and affordability. Objective three is to address the needs of first-time buyers, elderly, and handicapped. The possible, provide information on available programs, cooperate actively with state, federal, and local nonprofit organizations, encourage availability and maintenance of housing to benefit elderly persons. Objective four is to consider types of development regulations to lower costs. And they mentioned that costs can be lowered by incre, increasing site density, which is exactly what is, the, the plan is doing, is to take an, an existing senior housing organization that is town-owned land and turn it into a, an elderly complex. So I think that every way, every single housing goal seems to be met in terms of the objectives of the comprehensive land use plan.
When you add to that, that we want to maintain the senior center and upgrade it, comprehensive plan also calls for us to maintain services for all of our citizens, not just the young, but the old.
Yes.
In the recreational fields, our comprehensive plan has specific paragraphs regarding providing recreational areas for, again, the old and new, whether it be a baseball field or some substitute.
That's right. And in this particular case, as Mr. Beldon has mentioned, there, there is a natural symbiotic relationship between having an elderly complex and bringing in young people to play on the fields. It's, you know, it's sort of an uplifting and positive experience rather than totally isolating the elderly away from everything. You're, you're encouraging them to integrate with kids that apply in every day, and I think that's really very important.
And finally, from a tax assessor's point of view, because I realize your history there as well, low to moderate senior housing, when owned by church community, still pays a tax, is an exempt. And seniors tend to be less of a tax-based burden than do other types of low to moderate income housing or general housing, for instance, kids in the school district.
Yeah, I think that that's really a very important point. The only possible, you know, there may be a few children that come in because the age restriction, I think, may be fifty-five. There may be a few children that come in, but in general, there would only be a few. And the drain on the school system is, is nonexistent.
And general services.
And general services. I'm sure four o'clock, the ambulance, but other than that, really, no, it's very low.
Any questions?
Any questions?
We didn't bring in the issue of the mobile home parks. You picture that Portsmouth has absolutely nothing, but there are quite a few mobile homes in this area that seniors are living in. And the only reason why they're not counted as affordable housing is because they don't own the land underneath. And I think the picture shouldn't be painted as grim as it is because we do have numbers, and I think if you factor those in of with what this building is going to do, I bet you we're much closer to that ten percent.
We've always agreed to.
Yeah, and the comprehen, the comprehensive plan deals with that directly. They talk about having about six hundred mobile homes in the town, second only, you know, I think to Middletown in terms of the, the number of mobile homes within Newport County. And the, and the truth is, they do indicate that the natural market for a mobile home are for people who are less than affluent. And so therefore, there is that connotation that Portsmouth does have available. But it's, it, I, I think that it goes beyond that, you know? I think that it's more complicated, not just because they don't own the land, but because you don't want to sort of isolate or, or simply so you can go buy a mobile home.
Right, it's just that we, we said we're at two-point-eight, and even with this big number of property, it only brings us to three-point-something. And so you say, boy, how the heck are we ever gonna accomplish it? But I think when you really, for the heart and the soul of the people that live in this town, it's really, we're not that selfish. We do have the mobile home parks. We do have it so seniors can live or people that don't have big incomes can find a place to live to still work in this town and have a place. And I wish that number was more brought into the picture to give a, a fair.
Yeah, it's very difficult to, it's, it's difficult to bring it in because it doesn't really count on the standards. But you are correct, and that has been pointed out. Like I said, it's very dramatically pointed out in the comprehensive land use plan.
Okay, thanks.
Right, any other questions? Go ahead.
Just quickly, there's no rule in your, that you can't have children there.
No, I don't think so.
Some, some senior housings have rules, like they can only stay for thirty days or something.
No, but you could, as a planning board, impose that restriction.
No, I, I wasn't suggesting. I mean, some people have to have their, like, grandchild live with them or something in there, and then they can't because there's a rule. So I was just checking.
No, there are no kids in our other five.
I, I just asked a question, you know, the never ask question. Other five units that you run and all of the units together that are similarly situated as this, as LMI senior houses of the same size, do you have any children?
No.
I, I think in the documentation you sent, you estimated it could be up to four. I think I read that somewhere, so.
I think it's six.
Six, okay.
The market rate condos.
Oh, all right.
No, I was just checking if there was a rule because some people have their grandkids come stay with them, and there's a rule. I was just checking.
Yeah, a number of the senior housing developments that we own were created with HUD two-oh-two funding, and that has a restriction. But that program has changed so dramatically that it really doesn't exist anymore. So that isn't the source of funding that we're seeking to develop this with. And so there won't be that restriction that children won't be allowed. However, it's just that we're proposing this to be fifty-five and over and would absolutely be open to the planning board adding a condition saying that every resident that lives there has to be fifty-five and over so that if there was a couple who was fifty-five and they had a child, they would not be allowed to rent here. That's up to the planning. We are fine either way.
Did that answer your question? No, okay. Anything else?
The answer is so rare, it doesn't matter.
We're good. Any else, Mr. Chappelle? Okay, all right, let's, Leah, can we see if there's anybody online that has a question for the petitioner who wishes to speak at this hearing? Doesn't appear there is. Okay, is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak to this petition? Yes, sir, please come to the podium. If you could just state your, your name and address for the record.
My name is Chris DeVithune. I live at one-six-zero, lot number three on Bristol Ferry Road. I'm in a butter to the north of this wonderful project that's underway. And I was, I was noticing some of the general rules you have in special, for special applications. And one of them is to, to not block someone's solar, I was, solar project that I was gonna put on my house, but at sixty-five feet tall, November, December, January, and February, I'm in a shadow. I think the declaration of the sun is so low that, so I'm gonna scrap that idea. My, my bedroom, my, my wife's bedroom and my children's bedroom are probably about eighty feet from that parking lot. The car lights, I know, they spoke about that the use of the parking lots is lower than usual. I, I get that. But the car lights starting in the middle of the night, and the mercury vapor lights or whatever they put on the side of the building is gonna light up what is now a very dark and tranquil part of my yard. And it ain't gonna keep it that way, so. That, and that particular area, the park across the street, there's a couple of parks that are over across from the senior center where there's multiple housing units in there, getting extraordinary calls for service from EMTs. And you don't just get the EMTs, you get the cops, you get the bus, you get the fire truck. It's, it's a whole party when someone calls in because they fell down and sprained their ankles. Well, I can just imagine what however many people are gonna live in this place is gonna exacerbate that issue. And I'm sure everyone would love to have the bells and lights going outside their window at three o'clock in the morning, not me. So the, the, the water issues, well, I don't know how the town. So the, the, the water issues, well, uh, I don't know how the town of Portsmouth, who can't even give me 40 PSA in my line, is going to supply the needs that they're going to want. Can you imagine how many gallons of water it's going to, you know, flush the toilet for each person twice a day, a shower, wondriola, how much water that place is going to consume? And I can barely get 40 PSA at 160. I talked to the water department, they said, huh, you live on a hill, that's what you're going to get. You know, what do you do? Uh, so those are my complaints. I'm, uh, it's an, you know, it's an admirable, it's an admirable, admirable effort. My aunt who founded the, uh, CCH, uh, at a, God rest her soul, I'm sure she's smiling at this. I don't think she imagined a, having a holiday express, holding an express parked next to, uh, you know, she, she did it on a smaller venue, well, probably a little classier. This is going to be no different than the, the building that, that URI has taken over now, which was Days Inn or Ramada or whatever it was. So just the, the shape of the building looming, looming over my, the south side of my house. Not preferable. I have four acres. Maybe I can, uh, maybe I can build a house somewhere in the lower part, in the forest. So I don't have to look at that nonsense. The other thing I don't want to do is I see that they're doing a curb cut right on my property line. I would, I would like it for, because I may want to put a road in there and develop that property. You know, it's four acres. You only need a half an acre for a house. That's eight, eight regular houses or four McMansions. And, and if I want to put a road in, I don't want that curb cut impinging my distance on the road. So that's something to take into consideration. Uh, I have a driveway, yes, that would probably go for a house, but I would love, if I want to put in another road and build houses to the west of me downhill. I don't know if that curb cut's going to kill my desire to put a road or an access in down that way. You know, more, more special, special applications, but, um, I, I, I think it's a grand idea. I just think it's a major inconvenience for me and my family. And, uh, you know, it's a, it's a steamroller that's going forward. You know, I'm just, I'm just a neighbor, you know? And then of course, we're going to have two years worth of construction, which means I, I worked on construction sites my whole life, installing elevators and, and they don't, construction sites don't work seven to, seven to 4:30. You'd like to think they do, but there's always someone who's behind. The wallpaper guys, the painters, the electricians, people are there till all hours of the night. You got loaders, you got, you got heavy equipment. How would you guys like to live next to that? You wouldn't, I imagine, and my kids, you know, they're, they're eight and, eight and 11. They're going to think it's great until it keeps them awake. Thank you, uh, for your ear.
Hold on, I can't see if there's any questions for you from the board. A, a couple of things we can address, the construction noise, I, I hear you loud and clear, and we can address that on, if the petitioner goes forward, we can, we can put restrictions on when they can and cannot work, which could help you.
Yeah.
Uh, on the lighting, um, we heard the petitioner testify that they're going to use full cutoff dark sky lighting, which in, in theory will not cast lighting onto your property. I think that's.
Could we propose that it, it be motion sensitive? Because nobody's going to be on the backside of the building at three o'clock in the morning unless they're not supposed to be there.
I think that's a question that the, the petitioner would have to talk to the fire department about, uh, for, for proper lighting, but I, I do know that they testified that we would have cut off lighting so it wouldn't project into your yard. The water issue I can't help you with, that, that is the water department, but the petitioner does have to satisfy, uh, water use for, for the building.
I already had the guy some, there's no leaks in the system, it's just lousy pressure.
And I think they heard you about the curb cut. If there's something that can be done with that, I think.
I just don't want my shot at throwing a road in down there because of this one, because there's a minimum distance you have to have for a curb cut. I don't know what it is, 110 feet or whatever it is. I don't want that curb cut negating my ability to do something with my property in the future.
Let's, let's hear what Mr. Chappell has to say.
Yeah. I love, I love this guy, but he's the enemy tonight.
I think that, uh, in fairness, and that's what I said, there's a neighbor to the north that if we all sat there and said, who's the most affected by this? He's our guy, right? Trying to do everything we can. One, I agree that if there's services of any kind at an elderly facility, it may very well be ambulance. What a planning board restriction that the main entrance is used for that. I think the main entrance is going to be used for that anyway. I think that, that they're going to come through the wide open doors.
Yeah.
Through the main alleys and not the private back door used by residences. But I agree that if those fire trucks were on the other side of the building, that's greatly going to help him. And we can make sure with the fire department that that works as well. I think that's one. If anyone ever did propose a development on his land, if he comes and hires us and says, hey, I want this, and, and that's going to be right along the side of the road, what the planning board would say is, why don't we use the public road that you're putting in for his development and take a left off that into the back parking lot instead of having the two entrances side by side? And that would probably be easily addressed at that point. If it's further than a lot away, it would either be on the line or a full lot away. If it's a full lot away, it wouldn't affect because it would be greater than necessary. And if it was on the line, then we'd just use that public road and you'd have us turn in and take access off of that, which is easy. So I think a lot of the things can be met if they come up in the future. You also have a right to, and we can talk to in between now and preliminary, I know there's a heavy line of trees there, a lot of mature trees.
They're dead. They're all dead.
Lot dead. You, you have a right to, you know, we can talk about what is on that border and what's screening if anything additional. We don't like to cut down live trees to put in six foot abreviatey, quite frankly, we've all been there before. But if there's a problem with what's there and there needs to be some screening, I think we can meet with in between now and then and address that as well.
Cool.
Thank you, Mr. Divasun.
Thanks. Y'all have a nice evening.
All righty.
All right, Tom Grebe, 110th thorough drive. There's, there's just, yeah, I, I'm going to continue on the ball field because it's been probably over talked about tonight and there's something I just don't get. The town is deciding if the area shown on the plan should be a, a, a baseball field that we, will be used for some other recreational use. The town will pay for the construction of whatever is put there. The town will pay for the maintenance of that facility. Church community housing should not want involvement in that project either from a cost standpoint or a liability reason. So my question, why is the town leasing that portion of the land to, to CCH only to have it leased back? Maybe I'm not talking to the right people, but I couldn't help but think about that tonight when I'm listening to the conversation and the very good questions were asked about that ball field. Thank you.
I, I think it is being addressed to the wrong board, sir.
It probably is, but I want you guys to think about that.
Thank you.
The only other thing, Tom, is that the town is currently maintaining that baseball field. So it's, as far as the maintenance part goes, I don't think it's any change to the expense that they currently have.
Oh, I agree. My, my question.
It's just the building, and that's when I had asked the question, does the Little League pitch in so it's not the town, um, or, or work?
I'm not, I'm not asking a cost question. I'm asking why the hell are we leasing that land to church community housing when the town, it, town owns it now? They're going to move, make, you know, they're going to make the ball field at their own expense, they're going to maintain it, all of that. I just don't understand why we're leasing.
It's all paper. It's not, right? There's no expense. It's, it's just a formality.
I understand there's no cost, but there's a lot, you know, there's a loss of that land. If the town owns it and keeps it, they can do whatever they want with it down the road. 99 years from now, we may not want a playground there. We may not want a ball, ball field there. We may want something else. And now we've got a complicated, you know, mishmash of, of, of lease to, lease from, lease to, uh, to go through to, to, to fix that. It doesn't make any sense to me. I don't know why the town's doing it this way. And as long as you guys are going to talk about it, I thought you should, I thought you should think about that.
Thank you for the comment. Um, Mr. Beldon, you want to address that?
Yes, happily. Uh, it's, it's really pretty simple. It's just that that's a one contiguous lot right now. And as we've mentioned, we weren't certain whether or not we were going to be able to keep the ball field based on the need for the septic system, the drainage engineering, all of which still remains to be completed. Now, we've done preliminary engineering to show that the ball field can fit and we think the septic system is there, but that is now. At the time that the referendum was proposed, we did not know for certain. And we said that on the record at that time that we could not guarantee that the ball field would stay. That's why it's one lot being leased to CCHC and we'll be leasing back a portion without any restrictions on it. If at any point in the town, in the future, the town wants to change it from whatever it decides to do with it now to something else in the future, that will totally be within their purview to do.
Anyone else from the audience like to address this petition? Leah, there's nobody else online either? Okay. Okay. What is the pleasure of the board?
So I'll, I'll go ahead and make a motion to, uh, request comprehensive master plan approval for, uh, this project as a LMI development, um, incorporating exhibit one and, uh, contingent on satisfying the, the current concerns of that at the preliminary by Port, Port Fire Department for exhibit one.
That's, I saw you missed it, it was, that's exhibit two.
Oh, I'm sorry. Exhibit, yeah, I had it written down as two. Yes, exhibit two. Thanks for the correction.
Can we also add in subject to design review, uh, traffic review permitting from the Rhode Island DEM and the DOT as necessary?
Absolutely.
Yeah, meeting the fire departments.
And that was exhibit two.
Yeah, okay, the whole thing, okay.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Is there any discussion on the motion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Chair votes aye. Motion carries.
Good job, Mr. Divasun.
Oh, Divasun, we still have a, we still have one more, one more item of interest. I was just reminded by Mr. Garso, we have our, our monthly, um, project status report to receive and place on file.
Yes.
The motion, right? Second, all in favor of the motion, say aye. Motion to adjourn? Second, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Thank you, Mr. Garso.